Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, and we encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us here has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you, everybody. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Madam City Clerk, how are you doing today?
I'm terrific. How are you, Madam Mayor?
A little cold, you know, it's freezing outside, but otherwise I'm okay.
It just started raining.
For everybody heading home, I hope you have an umbrella ready and a raincoat, because it's going to be cold and wet outside. All right. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Here.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Rizotti?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Here.
And Mayor Perez?
Here.
Thank you.
Today, there will be two periods of public comment. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during our general public comment period, and must submit cards or call before the comment period begins. The first period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. And if you're here in person and would like to speak, you should have submitted the yellow public comment card to address the council. If you would like to call in, please do so now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. There is an additional public comment period available following the report to council this evening, and interpreters are also available here in the front. If you'd like to raise your hands, if anybody will need their assistance. And if not, I will let them go home as soon as the public comment period begins, so they can stay dry and head home. All right, tonight, we have five announcements.
Following our announcements for February 4th, 2025, the Burbank City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for a vacancy on the Infrastructure Oversight Board for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2025. The deadline to apply is Friday, February 14th, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, please apply online at burbankca.gov/bccapplication. For more information, contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851, or email Volunteers are needed for the homeless count in Burbank at 7:30 p.m. on Tuesday, February 18th. Facilitated by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, this point-in-time count is a visual snapshot of the number of people experiencing homelessness in Burbank. Volunteers may register by visiting theycountwillyou.org. For more information, contact the Burbank Homeless Team at 818-238-5182. Burbank Water and Power is seeking community feedback about the time limits at public EV chargers. If you drive a plug-in vehicle, please take this short survey to help improve Burbank's EV charging experience. Access the survey at surveymonkey.com/r/bwp-evsurvey, or scan the QR code. Sign up for the city's emergency response system, Alert Burbank, at readyburbank.org, and receive timely notifications in the event of an emergency and critical information. Stay safe, Burbank. The City of Burbank has launched a webpage for information on rights for undocumented immigrants residing in Burbank, including details about city council actions, available community resources, and any ongoing updates to ensure residents are informed about their rights. Learn more by visiting burbankca.gov/no_your-rights. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right, we have a few presentations this evening, starting with a presentation of a proclamation declaring February 1st through 28th, 2025, as National Children's Dental Health Month in the City of Burbank. I would like to welcome George Psycholi, Vice President of Kids Community Dental Clinic, to join me at the program, or at the podium. All right, I know you brought your team with you today, so, and I see them anxiously waiting, so let's bring them on up, too.
Okay, Luis Centeno, board member. Dr. Ramos is one of the dentists that volunteer her time to help the kids, especially that, as all of you know, we service the kids that have no insurance, you know, so, just a brief side. At this time, I would like Dr. Ramos to say a few things.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Dr. Clester Ramos, and I am a dentist at Kids Community Dental Clinic. I am honored to address you all today on behalf of the board members and Dale Gorman, our executive director, and particularly proud to represent my hometown of Burbank, which I've been part of since 2003. I graduated from Medicine Lutheran-Burrows and went to UCLA and USC. I will be departing Burbank for the first time in 20-plus years to pursue my lifelong dream to become a pediatric dentist, and I aspire to return back to Burbank to enhance my ability to serve kids and patients with special needs. So today, we convene to proclaim February as National Children's Dental Health Month. Our mission is to provide accessible, high-quality, and patient-centered care to children and their families within the San Fernando Valley. It is alarming to note that seven out of 10 children in the U.S. suffer from cavities, making decay the most common and chronic disease among children, surpassing asthma. To address this issue, we are committed to establishing strong relationships with families and children and empower them as advocates for their own oral health. I've been a part of the clinic for the past 12 years and witnessed kids become adolescents, adolescents to college students, and even college students to parents. And so it's been a privilege to be a part of their dental journey. So the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry recommends a dental checkup when the first baby teeth erupts around six months or by their first birthday, and we recommend, you know, usual brush twice a day, consume less sugar, and drink more water, and to maintain comprehensive dental visits at their dental clinics. And we at the clinic prioritize the well-being of underserved populations and committed to addressing socioeconomic barriers that hinder access to oral health care.
Thank you so much for that, and you're absolutely right. You know, we could all use that reminder to do our annual checkup. So I have a proclamation for you all today, declaring National Children's Dental Health Month. So whereas in 1949, the American Dental Association proclaimed February 8th as National Children's Dental Health Day, which was extended to a month-long recognition in 1981, whereas the Kids Community Dental Clinic of Burbank evolved out of the need to fill a crucial gap in oral health care services for children of low-income families, and whereas their mission is to provide affordable, quality dental care and preventative education for children of the working poor in an environment conducive to promoting good health, and whereas routine dental examinations uncover problems that can be treated in the early stages when damage is minimal and registrations may be small. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim February 1st through 28th, 2025, as National Children's Dental Health Month, and encourage all the citizens of Burbank, especially our children, to brush and floss daily. Thank you. Thank you for all you do, and on a personal note, I will say, I know you all go beyond the dental cleanings. I've been at your holiday events, at your Halloween events. You do everything to make sure that kids not only feel healthy in their dental checkups, but also feel that there's a community supporting them, so thank you for all you do. And Dale, if you're listening, thank you for all you do. All right, our second presentation of the evening comes a little later than the month we would have liked to present it at, but it is because this group has been busy at work. We have a presentation of a proclamation declaring January 1st through 31st, 2025, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of Burbank. I would like to invite the wonderful Ms. Gloria Salas, Governor of Zonta District 9, to please join me at the podium. Gloria, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, don't worry, the print is big, that's why it looks like it's a long page. Actually, January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, however, as we all know, human trafficking takes place 365 days a year. And for those who don't know the legal definition, human trafficking is the illegal exploitation of a person through force, fraud, or coercion. And it's not just sexual exploitation, but it can be labor trafficking. Anyone can be a victim of human trafficking, and it can occur in any U.S. community, even Burbank. The FBI in particular worked human trafficking cases under its Crimes Against Children and Human Trafficking Program. And Zonta Club of Burbank has had members of the FBI and members of the Department of Homeland Security in their human trafficking sections to come and give presentations throughout the last maybe seven or eight years. Here in the United States, both U.S. residents and foreign nationals are being bought and sold like modern-day slaves. Traffickers use violence, manipulation, false promises of well-paying jobs or romantic relationships to exploit victims. But if you all know, and I'm sure you are not, you're not blind to it, but if you go anywhere, walking across the street, going to the supermarket, and you see kids, they're constantly on their phone, and they're going like this, and they're just, they don't, they're not aware of their surroundings. So I'm just going to mention one case from the FBI files. This young lady was a happy 14-year-old who loved sports, did well in school academically and socially, but one summer, she became the victim of sextortion. And it's a growing internet crime in which young girls and boys are often targeted. Her life was turned upside down by an online predator who took advantage of her youth and vulnerability to terrorize her by demanding that she send him sexually explicit images of herself. After several months, her parents discovered what was happening, and they contacted the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. They later supported the FBI investigation that led to the arrest of a 26-year-old perpetrator who pled guilty to multiple counts of child pornography production, and was sent to prison for 105 years, but not before he used the internet to victimize nearly 350 teenage girls. And that's only one perpetrator. And we, you know, we think of Taken in all these movies about human trafficking, but it really happens, you know, you could be watching something on your, on your computer or playing these games where you're having a discussion with somebody else, but you think that other person is a 12, or 13, or 14-year-old, when in reality, it isn't. And that's how they get you slowly but surely, and I'm sure you can address that subject as well. But, and as I was thinking about today, and Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and what Zonta does, it seems every time I'm up here with Zonta members that we're always talking about something that's not upbeat, whether it's domestic violence, or child marriage in California, or human trafficking. But our role is to educate the community so that together we become aware of what's going on, the quiet, silent, behind-the-scenes things that are happening and taking advantage of our youth. But human rights have been stripped from these children and these women and boys, whether it's through human trafficking or child marriage, and it's nothing bright and cheery. But hopefully, when we celebrate our 90th anniversary being here in Burbank, that will be a bright and cheery note. So I thank you for this.
Of course, thank you, Gloria.
And I'd like to invite the Zonta members.
You beat me to it. Any Zonta, we may not have Zonta members in the audience, but I know we have some Zonta members on the podium, so if you'll like to come on down. And I will say, it's a little bit late, and they're also not here, but they have been busy at work, because I, I just have to say, I'm amazed by the, the effort, the volunteerism that has gone into Zonta during these times. It's been really hard nationally, and it's been really hard here at home with the fires, and they have thought of different situations that are occurring right now in our social environment, and how these can affect people from the lens of human trafficking, from the lens of domestic violence. So you're looking at a corner that maybe folks are not paying attention to, and so thank you for, for all that you do, Gloria.
Thank you. And I just have to say that last Sunday, we had members of the Rotary and Kiwanis over at Temple Beth Emanuel, helping us in the soap project, where we labeled soaps and hand wipes and whatnot so that we could share them with the hotels, because they're the ones who notice who comes in to their hotels, whether it's someone, you know, something may not seem right. And we also passed out flyers of children who are missing in the L.A. area and Sacramento area, and it just gives them something that they could be aware of, and if they recognize a child.
Thank you. And now I'll read you your proclamation. Whereas human trafficking is a heinous crime that exploits vulnerable individuals through force, fraud, and coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor, and whereas raising awareness and educating communities about the signs of human trafficking is essential to preventing this crime and supporting survivors, and whereas the City of Burbank strives to become a place where human trafficking does not exist, where people have opportunities available to them, and where all people are treated as worthy of a supportive community and of freedom. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim January 1st through 31st, 2025, to be Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Burbank, and encourage all our residents to join in the fight against human trafficking. Give it up again for both of our presentations. All right, Mr. City Manager, anything to report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to introduce our Park and Rec Director, Marissa Garcia. We kind of have a fun one tonight. We want to provide you an update on Park and Recreation's 100th Birthday this year.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and members of the City Council. I'm Marissa Garcia, and I am honored to stand before you this evening to announce that this year marks the 100th anniversary of our Parks and Recreation Department serving our wonderful community. For over a, or for a century, our parks, trails, and programs have brought people together, enhanced our quality of life, and fostered a sense of community here in Burbank. As we celebrate this milestone, I want to take a moment to thank the many employees, volunteers, and members of the community that have supported and shaped our parks over the years. Their vision, passion, and hard work have made our parks what they are today, and so we're very grateful for that. They have made our parks a place to live, work, and play, and I am honored again to be the Parks and Recreation Director today. Looking ahead, we remain committed to expand access, sustainability, and ensuring that these spaces thrive not only today but into the future. So with that, I will now invite our Recreation Services Manager, Erin Barrows, who will speak a little bit about our centennial celebration.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Barrows.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and members of the City Council. It's lovely to see you all tonight. As Marissa mentioned, my name is Erin Barrows. I'm a Recreation Services Manager with the amazing Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Department invites everyone to celebrate a century of community, parks, people, and purpose. For 100 years, the department has fostered community through various programs, events, and activities. The department's commitment to the community dates back, dates to its establishment in 1925. The journey began with the dedication of Vicroy Park, the city's very first park. Today, the department proudly operates 42 parks and facilities that serve the community. As the department reflects on the last 100 years, we continue to focus on our mission statement. Together, we strive to be the heart of the community by providing enriching opportunities through dedicated people, beautiful park, and inspiring programs. With our mission in mind, we strive to honor our department's legacy, current efforts, and plans for the future. Help us bring the centennial theme to life by entering our centennial photo contest for a chance to see your photo featured on the cover of the 2025 Summer Recreation Guide. Now is the time to look through those old photos and start taking new photos to show what Parks and Rec means to you. To view submission dates, contest rules, and to apply, please visit our centennial website at burbankca.gov/parks100. You can also celebrate with us by purchasing our limited-time centennial merchandise. These items will feature our special Parks and Recreation Centennial logo. T-shirts, hats, sweatshirts, water bottles, and more will be available for pre-order and can be purchased at select events. Again, you can please visit our centennial website to view all items that will be available for purchase. The department's year-long celebration kicks off on Saturday, February 15th, at 10:00 a.m. The community is invited to join us as we open the newly renovated McCambridge Park Playground. The ribbon cutting will take place as part of the Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo opening ceremony. We will also have exciting events and activities throughout our centennial year that highlight the various ways the department has positively impacted the lives of Burbank residents from all backgrounds and interests. As we celebrate this important milestone, we encourage the community to get involved in our upcoming events and activities, which have been thoughtfully planned with our communities at interest in mind. Please follow us on our social media outlets and check the centennial website, again, burbankca.gov/parks100 regularly for information about our events, history, merchandise, and more. We look forward to celebrating a century of parks, people, and purpose with you throughout 2025. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you all at our events soon.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to Parks and Rec on 100 years. We're really excited for, for all of you and grateful for all that you do. Mr. City Manager, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, and for the benefit of the public, the City Council met this afternoon at 4:30 p.m. to discuss two matters in closed session. The first item was conference with the city's labor negotiator, Ms. Betsy McClinton, Management Services Director pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 concerning negotiations with the Burbank City Employees Association. City Council took no reportable action on that item. Secondly, Council met in conference with the city's real property negotiator, Ms. Simone McFarlane, Assistant Director of Community Development pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 regarding potential acquisition of multiple properties at 725 North Lake Street, 724 North Victory Boulevard, 732 North Victory Boulevard, and 736 North Victory Boulevard. The City Council took no reportable action on this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for general public comment. I will be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who is next in line to speak, in order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion, and we have a designated seat right here in the front with the lovely new seat cover if you are next and would like to sit there. A timer is also available on the podium, and we'll let you know how much time you have. And we have our two interpreters. Has anybody asked for any need with our interpreters? Seeing none, I will allow you both to go home and stay dry out there. All right, persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on this item again following this segment. Please state your name for the record and correct me if I am wrong on your name. And Madam City Clerk, I have nine public comment cards. How many callers do we have?
We don't have any callers at the moment.
All right, there being nine public comments, we will have three minutes each, and our All right, there being nine public comments, we will have three minutes each, and our first speaker is Mr. Ron Backs, followed by Jason Lewis. Welcome, Mr. Backs. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ron Backs. Since we have the time, I can get all that in. Okay, I'm surprised there were have been no comments from Council regarding the two previous episodes, which covered the business plan of a would-be housing provider at this moment in time. The message was, why would anyone enter the housing market now? Or better yet, what drives current housing providers to remain? Okay, Episode Three. I have a brother whose wife retired last year, and he plans to retire this year. Circumstances required her sister move in last year, and for privacy reasons, I will not go into detail, shattering their plans to travel and enjoy retirement. At the moment, this is not a financial hardship, but it and other life-changing events may become some. Note the bold text. I mention this to cite how unforeseeable circumstances can disrupt future plans. It has been suggested to me to provide a concluding statement. Many people use real estate as a means to finance their retirement. I can't, you can't, and nobody can predict the future. Do not thrust an obligation of society upon a few individuals, housing providers, which may have a devastating effect on them. This will be the same conclusion for Episode Four. See you next week. But, P.S., in fact, a fact I did not realize until I became a full-time housing provider is rental income is investment income, not earned income. As such, it is not subject to Social Security tax and does not result in Social Security benefits. Future rental income is a housing provider's Social Security. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mr. Jason Lewis, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Jason Lewis, and I am here to, tonight, to put my enthusiastic support for Burbank declaring itself a sanctuary city and doing all it can to support its citizens. Now is not the time to comply in advance to a bunch of incompetent neo-fascists trying to break a toy. They were gifted by an apartheid South African overstaying his student visa. I read that some of you are concerned about retaliation in the form of a theoretical hold in funding. Well, would you like to hear about what you can do if it actually happens? I can tell you, because I'm on a team awarded a U.S. Department of Energy grant under the Inflation Reduction Act. Shout out to our partners at Sandia National Labs and UC Riverside. I'll follow up with you guys tomorrow. What you need to do is keep filing the paperwork and that you demand your funding, because it is legally your money. And as we're seeing, these paper tigers will just reissue another purposely confusing executive order exempting you. They're weird little cowards hiding behind keyboards. Don't help them overstep their authority. I'm proud Burbank Unified is standing against ICE raids. They raid schools and businesses to scare people, not to enforce immigration laws. This is domestic terrorism, pure and simple. We are a country of laws, and this is Burbank. The border is nowhere near here. They have no business harassing our children, our workers, or wasting our lives with their weak show of racist theater. Now, I ask you to support your citizens, your workers, your businesses, your community. I walk my kids to school every day, and you can just hear the language spoken to understand why we might be targeted. But this is exactly why we need to stand up for our neighbors. Come walk with me tomorrow and talk to families about whether or not they want their classmates protected from these ICE thugs. We are the fifth-largest economy in the world because of us, the workers, the business owners, not a bunch of reality-so losers trying to break a new toy. I read in the Burbank leader that Council Member Rosati was concerned we would be besieged by an influx of people coming in. We should be so lucky. These are investors, immigrants, entrepreneurs, job creators. We have more than a few vacant storefronts out here on Glen Oaks, and we need students. We've welcomed Ukrainian asylum seekers recently, and I hope we will do more for students who desperately, more for our schools who desperately need these students. Now, speaking of vacant storefronts and issues concerning kids, I applaud any efforts to alleviate childcare in Burbank, infant to elementary. I can recount firsthand how our family had a heck of a time getting infant care. Then our kids are 10 and 13 now. So again, imagine what parents are dealing with now after COVID. Now, we ended up with our kids in downtown LA until our youngest got a slot at Mary O'Connell at 3:00. We had them in downtown LA because that's where our offices are. Now, if we want some of these vacant offices here in Burbank filled, maybe we should get some more infant and toddler care centers open and make them affordable. $2,000 a month isn't affordable, and I should know because we were paying $2,450 a month at our highest nine years ago. So, we are grateful that we got into Burbank Unified around the bell program, but not many families are so lucky, even in elementary school. Now, perhaps our 100-year-old Parks and Rec Department could expand their programs and help out a little bit, because it is really hard to have kids if you don't have a place for them when they're old enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Mr. Scroggs, followed by Nor Karas.
I love being called Mr. Scroggs. Sounds like my grandfather. Greetings, everyone. I'm Mark Scroggs. Last week, I mentioned that people in the entertainment industry should check out www.stayinla.org. It's a great website. I think there's 18,000 or $19,000, $1,000 names on the petition now. It has a lot of good information on things that they're looking for, including suspending permit fees, more entertainment grants for local projects. I have a client that came from Michigan where he shot a short film that now was produced with some clients of mine in it that's going to go to Amazon later this year from a short film grant. So I just wanted to mention that. I've also been speaking, I was going to bring this up before, but we've had fires and everything else going on, with many of my fellow reps, with Council Members Olins, Vice Mayor Takahashi, the Burbank Economic People, the Valley Economic People, about creating some sort of forum or roundtables to bring up ideas. We've done this in little groups, and sometimes when you bring in people from different fields, they have the best ideas. And I know that our legislators are doing different things in different organizations, but there's some great ideas from many of us, and I hear it all the time when I leave these meetings or I'm out around. So, I know the economic people are going to talk about something similar soon. So I just wanted to mention that. I'm calling my idea, just to give it a name, My Two Cents Burbank. So, I've got a website, not a website, we have Facebook page, Blue Sky, we're going to have an email, mytwocentsburbank@gmail.com, and I'm recruiting people now and talking to my friends to get involved, because the best ideas come from us. Where in the entertainment industry is an ecosystem. All parts depend on each other. You have to have catering, you have to have costumes, you have to have agents and managers, and post-production. So we all depend on all this. We all have different needs and different ideas and different perspectives, and it's not getting any easier out here right now. So, I also believe that small businesses should be the focus for a lot of this stuff with grants, with, because that's what you build. You know, the big studios are lovely, but they don't hire as many people, and they're going elsewhere. So, like I said, I've been reaching out to people. I'm so not used to having this much time. But, you know, just to finalize, The LA Times today is online, has a story. The headline is, "What We Lose If Hollywood Becomes a New Detroit of the Entertainment Industry." So, I'm going to send that to you guys. I recommend it checking out because it does say what's going on. Also, you have Deadline reporting that New York is offering $100 million of tax incentives for independent projects. There's a lot of independent films and a lot of independent TV pilots. I have a couple of clients doing those. They're getting bought. So, the world's changing. We just have to kind of stay on it and change. That's why, you know, I'm glad the city's been involved with all this, and so just keep going. Also, I'm going to say, my cats are from the shelter, and I'm wearing them tonight.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Scroggs. Our next speaker is Nor Karas, followed by Bob Karas.
Good evening. We have a slide presentation. Good evening, Mayor. Oh, where do I press? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, and fellow members of the community. My name is Nor Karas. My husband and I are here this evening in hopes of getting something done about a subject we have been communicating with the Planning Department about for more than four years. We are hoping the City Council can help us restore view protections. We live at 2807 Joaquin Drive in the hillside area that had an ordinance that is supposed to protect views. This is the slide of our property. The star is where our home is. The circle is where our neighbor erected a fence between our two properties. This was our view at the final inspection days before the purchase of our home in April of 1998. Please note, the prior owner, who had purchased the home in 1973, had built a tile patio on the left side of our backyard along with 50 feet of open fencing to take advantage of the unobstructed views. They even built a fire pit and put the exercise bicycle in this place to enjoy the view and the breeze that comes up the hill. There is another, this is another picture taken from a different vantage point, where you can see all the way to Griffith Park. On the same weekend that we moved in in 1998, our next-door neighbor to the south of us moved into 2801 Joaquin. The slope between our lots is typical and common for views with terraced lots throughout the hillside area. A downward view is considered the primary view by the city ordinance. Our neighbor planted a hedge that partially obstructed our view, and at the time allowed their vegetation to grow further to obstruct, further obstruct our view. In March of '21, our neighbor removed the hedge and most of the vegetation on the slope and constructed a six-foot solid fence along our mutual property line that completely obstructed our view. The Hillside Ordinance passed in 2006 prohibits the construction of a fence such as this without a site plan, view study, and a permit. None of this was obtained. The fence was constructed a few days after the hedge was removed. Even more interesting, this privacy fence is clearly directed at obstructing only our view, not the view of our neighbors directly behind us. The fence is shown in yellow. Notice that stops at the end of our property and does not continue along the same property line that abuts to our neighbors behind us. This is a diagram showing the views from our backyard across our neighbor's property. Notice that the views, which are shown in red, do not look into our neighbors' windows. Here is a diagram showing the views that our neighbors directly behind us have into our next-door neighbor's house, which is shown in yellow. The neighbors behind us have unobstructed views into our next-door neighbors' pool area, patio, balcony, and every single window on both floors of the back of their house. If the goal of this fence was to create privacy, why does it stop at the end of our lot? This is the view that we would have if they did not have the fence blocking it. Thank you for your time, and my husband should be next.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Karas, followed by Jim Casey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Bob Karas. On March 21st, 2021, our neighbor removed the hedge along our property line and told me he was going to install a six-foot fence. I said the Hillside Ordinance required a permit and a view study. He said a permit was not required. I called the planner Xavier Thomas that day about the Hillside Ordinance. He said that since the hedge was removed, it was no longer grandfathered in, and our neighbor would be required to comply with the Hillside Ordinance approved in 2006. He said the permit would require a view study to determine the impact that the new fence and new vegetation would have on our view. He acknowledged that this type of view is common for the most homes in the hillside area. He said when the fence was being constructed, to call code enforcement, they came out and cited the property for a code violation because they failed to get a permit. Code enforcement recommended that our neighbor stop the construction because the city could require its removal. Our neighbor declined and finished the fence. He was told he would have to obtain a permit. The case was assigned to Lucia Wong. We spoke to her numerous times. She thought we should be able to reach a compromise and understood our concerns. Later, we found out she left the city. Then, the case was assigned to a planning technician. He said both properties would be inspected by the Planning Department as part of a view study. He later told us that our neighbor's property had been inspected by him and others in the Planning Department, but no one contacted us to evaluate the impact on our view. On October 22nd, 2021, the technician inspected our property. I gave him a copy of our objection to the fence and pictures of other properties in the area with similar views. In November 22, and March 2023, I sent memos to the technician, but no response. The city website indicated it was still in process. Around April of 2023, Mr. Bichette informed us that the technician had left. He said he was a senior planner and would assign it to a new planner by June. We told him about our objections to the fence and how long this has been going on without any action from planning. He said this could be resolved with a compromise, allowing us a view and our neighbors some privacy. We said we were agreeable to that. In August 2023, the case was assigned to a new planner. I called her several times with no reply. On March 6th, 2024, the planner Sarah and her supervisor finally returned our call. They said the ordinance had been changed in 2022 and no longer required a permit or a view study. We said that we were never notified of this change and asked why hillside residents were not notified that their view protections were taken away. They said they would look into it, but never got back to us. If the ordinance had been changed in 2022, why were we not told this during discussions regarding a compromise in 2023?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Casey, followed by Cynthia Pease.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, members of City Council, staff, and members of the community. My name is Jim Casey. I am a 25-year resident of Burbank, a local Realtor, and I head up a grassroots organization of over 400 Burbank residents called Preserve Burbank, which was responsible for the Interim Development Construction Ordinance, or IDCO, that was issued in 2015. Two years later, with our help, the city instituted the Single Family Design Guidelines for new construction that included view protections not only for the hillside community, but also for the rest of Burbank. You may recall that in March of 2022, this council, with the encouragement of Mr. Rosati, who was on the planning board at that time, voted to rescind much of the Single Family Design Guidelines and protections in order to ease the backlog of building permits that were being blamed on the Single Family Design Guidelines. At the time, we were very vocal about our objection to rescinding the guidelines, and only now are we beginning to see the unintended consequences of that decision. I was certainly not aware that the rescission would eliminate view protections for hundreds and hundreds of homes on the hillside. I doubt that you were either. As a local Realtor, I can attest to the fact that Rob and Nor chose their home and paid a premium for it because of the spectacular views they have of the valley from their backyard. If we could bring the last slide back up. If I had to estimate the value reduction to their property because of this fence, it would be in the hundreds, or excess of $100,000. I had to stand on a ladder in order to take this photo. There is no view whatsoever left in their yard. I don't know why the owners of 2801 Joaquin have been so aggressive with the placement of this fence. They say fences make good neighbors, but in this case, the fence appears to be an intentional attempt to obstruct views for one neighbor and one neighbor only. This is a spite fence. A strategically placed fence further down the hill would create privacy around their pool and allow for the Karas family to continue to enjoy the views and breezes that they paid for. I've been in touch with the Karas family for almost two years now. I've spoken with representatives of the Planning Department, who seem to have thrown up their hands on this situation, and I cannot blame them. Although the long delays between follow-ups and the sustained four-year efforts of the Karas family have had to go through, to me, are unacceptable. Can someone here please take action on this issue and restore the view protection that the Karas family and hundreds of others are entitled to? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Cynthia Pease, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and honored City Council members, and all the staff that sits here every Tuesday night. Happy Tuesday. For those of you who don't know me, most of you do, but I am the remaining founding member of the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission. On your staff report tonight, there is a section that talks about the consolidation of some commissions and boards and the reduction of the number of people on those boards. I can only speak for the phone calls that I got in regards to the Cultural Arts Commission and the Arts in Public Places. There seems to be no objection, and it could be to the benefit to have the combination of the Arts in Public Places and the Arts Commission. There is a big question about why you would want to reduce the numbers, and the reason they're asking that is because right now, Burbank, we are working to become the arts, I'm not going to call it capital, but a major fingerprint for the arts with the city of Burbank. If we're no longer quite the media capital, we can at least be the star shining for the arts. And I do want to shout out to the Parks and Rec Department just how wonderful this city is when it comes to all kinds of parks and... all kinds of parks and rec events. For the size of this city, you have one of the best Parks and Rec departments in the state for the size comparable. So I want to thank everybody in the Parks and Rec Department for that. Now, the centennial is coming up, this hundred years. We have, coming up, a performance or a play of the original artists that were here a hundred years ago, who were nationally famous artists, okay, and who performed and worked and helped build this great city. So this year, we were going to collab, we will collaborate with Parks and Rec on that particular event. But also, when it comes to the number of people on the commissioners, we want to do a whole come-together program now for all the young ones who are educated and experienced in the entertainment business who no longer have jobs. And so Woodbury is very interested in that and will work with us, and AFM forty-seven and the Animation Guild are all interested in this well, in this as well, because it may be fine to have unions, but you have to have a job to be in the union. So based on that, we're trying to build the arts, and as far as capacity, we need every single member. Right now, it's nine members on the, on the Arts Commission. And we, we actually could use more because this is free, remember, it's free labor. So I just wanted everybody to think about that.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Donahue, followed by Elizabeth Bax.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members, and very talented staff. My name is David Donahue, homeowner, business owner in this great city. It's going to be a much lighter topic than last week, last council member, and council meeting. I think it's necessary. Something happened yesterday, a big deal for those of us who are paying attention. And I, for one, was not, until this morning I heard about it. MCS, Metropolitan Culinary Services, has been a concessionaire for the Burbank Hollywood Airport for years. The principal and the operators have been probably some of the most generous to this community than I have heard. And so when I watched a little bit of the recording of it from the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Airport Authority, I was very impressed to be able to see Chaimy Kiezer, Paul Herman, Albert Hernandez, Lee Walkner, all make personal testimony to the authority on behalf of MCS, because there was a battle going on to see who was going to have the concessionaire for the new airport. Staff recommended another company. The majority of the commissioners voted for MCS. So we have a community partner, somebody who's been very generous to, like Home Again LA and other places, and particularly one I was working on, which is the Los Angeles Equestrian Center donations for volunteers helping out large animals and horses. Without any hesitation, the principal said, hey, whatever you need, let me know. So for the last three nights, I've been going to the airport, loading up the back of my car, and taking it to the LAUC. Dust-covered tables and utensils, it's no point to clean it, but you sit there and you see the eyes and appreciation for this. It was after that that I learned about this particular battle that was going on for this massive contract. So I know that you guys are in connection with this, and you all probably already knew about it, but I think it's just important to bring it to the record that MCS, as a community partner, a major donor to a lot of great organizations, won this contract, and I, for one, could not be happier so. Congratulations to MCS, and thank you for your service. Have a nice night.
Thank you for your comment. Our final speaker this evening is Elizabeth Bax.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members and city staff. I'm Liz Bax. In light of a couple of agenda items on the next City Council meeting agenda, I would like to emphasize that economic hardship is affecting not just renters, but also small housing providers who are facing rising costs, taxes, and maintenance expenses. Rent control or rent cap will reduce landlords' flexibility to maintain properties and invest in improvements, leading to housing quality to go downhill. Many small housing providers are feeling pressured to sell their properties exiting from the market due to financial strain. This constant push by a small amount of people is in essence going to reduce housing availability and affordability in Burbank. Without these small housing providers, Burbank is destined to become a town of corporate rental properties. It's kind of sad the charm this town doesn't seem to matter anymore. The charm that we have doesn't seem to matter anymore, and this is because the residents that thought it did matter are slowly being forced out of Burbank. So I'm wondering, can the city incentivize landlords to maintain the housing quality, giving them reason to keep these properties? We know if sold, many of these properties will be sold to corporations, not unlike the ones that are currently being built in Burbank. Maybe you could propose some taxes or rebates, maybe subsidies or grants for small landowners to offset the losses that will be caused by rent control, ensuring that they can maintain their buildings and their viability, ensuring they will survive. Another idea, would it be possible to cap property taxes of the housing provider's rental property? Also, can you allow landlords to reset rents to market rates when the units become vacant? This would help the landlords. I would suggest that you, most of these Burbank apartment owners, housing providers, are good people. They wish well on their tenants in their properties. They hate this feeling that comes from people demanding Burbank take action against housing providers. I would ask the city to collect data, the facts, and find out exactly how many bad housing providers Burbank truly has. Find out how many renters are truly complaining about all the landlords leaving and leave out the manufactured results of what's going on. I would also take the advice of the rent cap study. Do more research, gather more data. If the City Council is going to consider a rent registry, could you also consider some kind of tenant data registry? One that, which people would, who are tenants, would go online and be registered to give data that would help make sure the housing providers are not being taken advantage of. I think this would be equitable and address that many small housing providers are having a hard time too. A lot of housing providers are middle-class and in the same current economic situation that the renters are in. They are simply trying to survive as well.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that being our last speaker, I declare the public comment period closed. And now is the time for a brief response from City Council, the City Manager, and/or our City Attorney. Mr. City Manager, I see you reaching for the mic.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one comment. CDD is aware of the issue pertaining to the fence, and will reach out to the homeowner and contact them this week to follow up to see if there's any options available. We do apologize for any frustrations they may be having, but we will be following up this week. We also will, in that vein, will follow up with the council as far as updating you on what the disposition is, so you guys are aware of what's happening. So I don't have anybody from CDD tonight, so I don't have all the details, but we'll follow up.
Wonderful, and sensing from my colleagues, we would love to hear that update. We really would. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, anything? No? Councilor Mullins, I see you reaching for the mic.
I didn't realize my mic was actually on. Since it was on, here we go. Thank you, everyone who came out tonight. First, I want to congratulate our Parks and Recreation Department for the centennial. And I have to tell you, I love the logo. I, it caught my attention, whoever designed the logo, kudos to you. The way you have the wave and, great, it's really eye-catching, so great job for doing that. I want to address Jason regarding the childcare, and this is something that we discussed on our goals, goal setting. And that was one of the items that was on there, and I think Councilmember Vice Mayor Takahashi brought it up. And all of us here understand the pain that families go through with six grandchildren here. I know how expensive it is. So that is something that's going to be coming, hopefully, to council to discuss in the future. And Mr. Scroggs, I told you I'm available when you're ready for that meeting. Definitely ready to have, so thank you for that. Everyone else was addressed, and the other items on the agenda we'll address later on, on Agenda Item Number Three. And Mr. Bax and also Liz Bax, thank you for your constant input and for your recommendations. And shout out to Mr. Donahue for bringing, yes, I'm going to give you a shout out tonight, for bringing some good news to this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the end of the night, would it be, Mr. City Manager, would it be appropriate to ask for just a memo to come home to us on any changes to view protections from two thousand and twenty-two? Is there a way to highlight?
At the end of the night.
Okay, excellent. Mr. Lewis, I just want to mention, we did have a robust discussion about what you were talking about. Not to get too far off topic, but we sought to move forward without using the word sanctuary city. We feel that there's protections we can do without having to invoke certain words. And Mr. Scroggs, next week, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we're discussing the Entertainment Industry Task Force. Is that still on the agenda, Mr. City Manager, for next week's agenda?
It will be this month. We're working on it. It's in progress. We have a couple of good ideas for you, and that's, it may take one more, but I think you're going to like what you see.
Okay, great, excellent, all right.
You beat me to it. I've been waiting for my agenda item back. Councilor Rosati.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The logo is the first thing I caught, so congratulations on that. Whoever did that logo, they did a great job. Regarding the immigration issue, just launched, JJ and his team launched the Know Your Rights site. I don't know if you saw it. I spent, just before I came to council, I was in my car just looking at the site. Fantastic, all the information's there, everything from the staff reports, so I encourage everyone to go, log on to our city site. It's also being pushed out on various apps, on the website, on our social media. It's a lot of good content. Mr. Donahue, you seem like the new member to the Rancho. Doing a great job feeding those folks and all those volunteers, so thank you for doing that. And then regarding the Single Family Home Guidelines, you know, we're all, we'll disagree on that. That policy was a disaster when it was adopted, and it, it, it's single-handedly stalled our housing market in Burbank. I give staff kudos for streamlining that process, especially with the advent of SB nine, SB thirty-five, ADUs, where you can build exceeding density and height restrictions with a thirty-day shot clock, and our residents can't even add on a master suite on the back of their house without waiting twenty-four, thirty months. We were able to get that down to eight to nine months, and I think we can probably, there's probably some low-hanging fruit where we can probably do better and stream that process down even further, so we'll look into the view issue, but I doubt highly that has anything to do with the streamlining process. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone who came out tonight to speak, and those who are watching who sent us emails. Thank you for sending your emails as well and the meetings that you have coordinated with us. Couple of items we're going to get to at the next, on our one agenda item tonight. I wanted to thank Mr. Bax for the conclusion at the end of your presentation. It was very clear, and it really helped kind of put a little bow on what you were trying to say. I appreciate that. Mr. Lewis, I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Mullins about the childcare task force. Very important to me, as you all know. So that is coming back, and believe me, I've beaten that drum very loud, as loud as I can. And then on the topic of undocumented immigrants, when is that topic, we have a second step coming back on that. When is that scheduled to come back?
We're looking for the eleventh, next week.
Next week, okay, so next week we'll be coming back. Mr. Scroggs, similar sentiment, and we have met once before in like a little baby roundtable with a few of your folks. I would be absolutely open to do that again anytime, so please, you have my, my calendar linked. Yeah, okay, great. And then, let's see, that was already addressed. And then, Mr. Donahue, thank you for bringing the information about MCS. I hadn't had a chance to look at the minutes yet from the authority. MCS, as you mentioned, has been our concession vendor in the airport forever. I mean, I don't even know how long it's been, probably longer than I've been in Burbank. So it's good news to hear that we get to keep a local, a local participant in the community in our new airport. So I don't know the details of what happened, so I don't know, I mean, in the weeds of what the details were, but it's just generally great to hear about locals being involved. So thank you to everyone who came to speak. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Takahashi. All right, I'm the last one who hasn't gone, right? Okay. I want to make sure I don't skip any one of you. I got to start with, I'm sorry, you floored the three of us over here. We're laughing. JJ, Jonathan Jones. Love the new nickname.
Is that acceptable? I'm sorry. He's been called a lot worse.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. JJ works. My mother also says JD Jones, so just so you can have that one too. Yes. But yes, that's very acceptable. Thank you, and I appreciate it. BurbankCA.gov backslash no underscore your underscore rights. Check it out.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, or should I say JJ? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Scroggs, as always, for coming down, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to make you sound like your grandfather. It just came out today. But as we discussed early on, the need for a median entertainment subcommittee, so I'm glad to hear it's coming back this month. I've been anticipating this for a while, and it's why I asked for the agenda item, because I think it's really important for us to, I think these meetings that we're doing individually and across the community with the entertainment industry are important, but it's important that Burbank have its own subcommittee to really show the entertainment community that we're, we're interested and invested in this and take ownership of that title, Media and Entertainment Capital. So thank you for coming every week and being our, what I feel is like our NPR on what's happening in media and entertainment. To Mr. Lewis, you heard from everybody, we all are invested in childcare, and it's certainly an issue that has been shared throughout many of our surveys, throughout many of our community concerns, and it's part of our goals, so it's definitely going to get addressed this year. And my colleague spoke on the other agenda item. We'll see you next week. And to Mr. and Mrs. Karaz, I know they're no longer here in the audience, but please know we're, oh, I see, they're still out here. We're waiting for, to hear back from what the City Manager reports to us. We are also anticipating a response to that, and I'm very deeply sorry that you're going through that issue. It must be very, very frustrating. And then finally, Ms. Cindy Pease, I did not forget about you, but we will address your comments when you, when we get to the agenda item itself. So thank you so much for, for bringing that forward, and we hear you loud and clear. All righty. Now let's move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items on consent this evening. Item one is approval of the City Council minutes of the Goal Setting Special Meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Item two is approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Burbank Police Department and the United States Capitol Police to assist with protective services for congressional events and/or protective operations.
I make a motion to move the consent calendar.
You read my mind. Do you have a second?
I'll move it.
All right, motion by Mullins, second by Rosati. Let's vote.
Councilmember Anthony.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yes.
And Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We have one report to council this evening, and I am ahead of schedule. After the staff's presentation, the City Council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the agenda item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on this item before, during general public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, please submit your yellow comment card now. The report to council tonight is a review of the City of Burbank Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Madam City Clerk, Ms. Kimberly Clark, please present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be presenting item number three this evening. It's the review of the City of Burbank Boards, Commissions, and Committees, which we abbreviate here as BCCs. Councilmember Mullins requested a report on the composition and the attendance policy of the city's BCCs. The City Clerk's office worked with department heads and their staff members who work closely with the city's BCCs to develop a list of suggested modifications to the structure and composition of these groups. Tonight's report is a first step only to gather the council's input and direction on proposed changes to the city's BCCs. Madam Mayor, I would like to present the entire report, and then after council discussion, I would like to revisit each item to confirm your direction to staff.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
The first recommendation concerns establishing a consistent member composition. The city clerk's office conducted a survey of 52 cities and found that, on average, each had 12 boards and commissions comprised of five to seven members. Burbank's boards and commissions, the membership currently ranges from five to nine members, with the exception of the youth board, which currently has 17 members, and will be discussed later in this report. Staff recommendations included establishing a consistent composition of five members, or in the case of some BCCs, no more than seven members, for all city-initiated BCCs, with the exception of the youth board. If council opts to reduce the size of a given BCC, this could be gradually implemented as current terms expire or positions become vacant. The second consideration is consolidation, changes to membership, and BCC name changes. One consideration is to remove the requirement to appoint one member to the Art in Public Places Committee from the residential community, and one member from the business community following a recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce, as this practice is not currently followed. Item two would be consolidate the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission and Art in Public Places Committee as a new commission, potentially named the Cultural Affairs Commission. This new Cultural Affairs Commission would maximize and leverage resources, including staffing, to achieve goals and objectives in an efficient manner. Item C would be to consider changing the name of the Community Goals Committee to a more descriptive name, such as the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Goals Committee. Another suggestion would be to consider changing the name of the Infrastructure Oversight Board to the Capitol Projects Oversight Committee, which is a more descriptive title. Item E is to allow all members of the youth board, including middle school voting alternatives, to be voting members of the youth board. Another suggestion for the youth board would be to take a high school student from the Lisi, I'm not pronouncing that right, Lisi International, Lila, L-I-L-A, of Los Angeles. And the third suggestion for the youth board is to reduce the number from 17 to 13, 10 of whom, or 11 if Lila is added, would represent the designated schools as currently stated in the BMC, with three or four members appointed at large to maintain an odd-member number, 13 or 15, for voting purposes, and to allow non-designated schools an opportunity for representation. The third major item concerns our absence policy. Currently, the Burbank Municipal Code provides limited reasons for BCC member removal, namely absences. Three consecutive absent, sorry, three consecutive regular meeting absences, or failure to attend 75% of regularly scheduled meetings in a 12-month period. Council may wish to simplify the attendance requirement as follows. A member's second absence would continue to trigger a warning, with staff directly notifying the member in writing, with a copy provided to the chair and the city clerk. Instead of relying on the member's appointment date or their attendance during the previous quarter, council could amend the code to apply to situations where a member misses three meetings during the 12-month period of August 1st through July 31st, with the absence count resetting the following August 1st. Upon the third absence, the city clerk would implement the existing procedure, where we create a staff report and we bring it to you for consideration, and you vote to either excuse the absences or remove the member. Should a member have three absences, and council excuses them, but then misses a fourth meeting, council may wish to amend the code so that, A, upon the member's fourth absence, the city clerk would then, once again, implement the existing procedure for you to consider and vote, or B, council may choose to authorize the member's automatic removal by city staff. Finally, council may wish to amend the code to allow removal of a member for situations not tied solely to three or four missed meetings, such as, A, repeated absences after an excusal hearing, B, violation of the policies outlined in the city council expectations of board, commission, and committee members, or C, failure to attend training sessions mandated by the city. Some other council considerations that we're bringing forward to you is implementing term limits for BCC members, eliminating the requirement for members to be registered electors of the city, and that has to do with Senate Bill 225, which was passed in 2019, and allows residents who are non-citizens to serve on boards and commissions. Something for you to consider. Requiring members of the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission and the Sustainable Burbank Commission to be Burbank residents. Alternatively, council may wish to not impose a residency requirement in order to allow members of, for example, the entertainment industry, who do not live in Burbank, to serve. Removing non-voting liaisons from the Sustainable Burbank Commission. Another consideration would be addressing whether individuals serving on one board and commission can apply to serve on another without resigning from their current position. Alternatively, council may wish to require serving BCC members to complete their term before applying for a different BCC, or to wait until the major recruitment, which happens each year in July. Establishing guidelines for the conduct of BCC meetings similar to the guidelines recently established for city council meetings. And lastly, council may also wish to ask BCCs to establish annual or biennial goals, and to report out in a council meeting on their progress. If you have any questions at this time, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We will start with public comment. I have two speakers for public comment this evening, Mr. Jason Lewis, followed by Mr. David Donahue. All right. You will have three minutes to speak.
All right. Hello again, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and council members. As the grandson of a Union Sound Mixer, a Union Camera Operator, born right here in Burbank, and is a friend to many underemployed workers, I want to briefly say thank you for your support and what you can do to continue supporting the entertainment community. Like many Burbankers, I would likely not be here but for our unique heritage. Now, as a commissioner contemplating, completing his fourth year, I wanted to take the time to weigh in on this agenda item. Firstly, I just want to say, my experience on the Transportation Commission has been great. Our Community Development Department liaison, Assistant Director David Criskie and his staff, Nick Berant and Natalie Burns, are awesome. We couldn't do without them. I know that you all on council spend hours reviewing applications, listening to our petitions, and carefully choosing the composition of our boards and commissions. I would like to encourage you to then continue your involvement in how the culture of the meetings and the board members and commissioners get along with the city staff that work the meetings, and maybe even take an anonymous survey of board and commission members. Clearly, we are trying to improve things a bit. I've witnessed less-than-ideal relationships in other public meetings on display, even a member quitting mid-meeting. In my time on the Transportation Commission, we've had many contentious issues brought up, but we've always managed to have educational discussions and productive outcomes to be brought to you all in the form of meeting minutes and motions. Speaking of meeting minutes or videos, I hope you do watch that Burbank-Landale-Pasadena Airport Authority meeting from February 3rd. It's a long one, but it's worth catching the end, where a commissioner from Glendale appears to do what could be, working in the interest of a petitioner for a multimillion-dollar terminal food service and retail concession contract. I hope our city attorney can take a look, because it looks to me from that video that our cities need to do a better job reviewing the actions of all board and commission members. I should know, because I'm someone who frequently reveals my business in the zero-mission bus world, to make it clear that I have no financial conflicts where my judgment and votes come from. I want to thank former mayors Talamontes, Gabriel Luddy, and Overham, and their fellow commissioners from Glendale and Pasadena for their commitment to the honest duties of the Airport Authority. Now, I've witnessed among my own commissioners educated on their obligations to identify themselves to the media. Why are we allowing commissioners from other cities to have a clear emotional investment in the outcome of a massive contract? I think we should find out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. David Donahue, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor, Takahashi, council members. My name is David Donahue. One of the greatest and most educational things is going to a board or a commission meeting. I think there's only one other person that I can see who's done that more than I have, and it's a gentleman sitting over my left shoulder, who goes to a lot of them. So you learn a lot. You have to have a lot of, and it's, it's dense information. Burbank Water and Power, one of the most intimidating, but probably one of the most rewarding, is one that I think that, I don't know, I'm not sure if there's a liaison from the council that goes to BWP, but I know there is, for like the Police Commission and others. So there are, is, I think, I'm not sure if you guys go to all of them. I guess that's my question. And you've heard me talk about Burbank Water and Power, you know, all the time. The greenhouse gas reduction plan, I believe, is on a future agenda item. We're going to hear a little bit about that now. I bet it's going to be the two Drew shows. So and Mr., the information that will be given to you is, again, probably some of the most dense, some of the most critical. I know, Vice Mayor Takahashi, you've been following this for a while. I think you all have, but it, it's something that you need to pay attention to, should pay attention to, should. I would recommend that anybody who's watching, following this agenda item that's here in the city, get involved in the board or commission. I know that's how a lot of you have been active into the community, and I really applaud you for doing that, because it takes a lot of time, but you can get a lot out of it. So be involved, get involved, so that when I come up here again and talk about IRPs, GDRPs, you're going to know a little bit more about what I'm talking about. So you guys have a great rest of your evening. It's going to be a really long one, and so congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comment. All righty. There being no more public comments, we will now move on to council questions. Who would like to start? Councilor Anthony.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose a little change to our normal standard. Normally, we ask all our questions, and then we deliberate. I think this is the first council where every single member has served on a board or commission that's sitting up here, which I think is unique for us, because we're pretty educated on this. So I'd like to offer, maybe we, if we want to ask general questions at the top, but then I'd like to just go through each of the recommendations.
So our, our city clerk has already suggested doing that at the beginning, so we'll definitely, we're definitely going to follow her process, but right now, let's get through our questions first.
I guess my only question is, I can't, I think at some point, one of us or previous council members have asked for a report to come back on boards and commissions, but a lot of these are stuff that I had never heard about. The impetus for this and the basis for this, was this, over years of collection of data, like how did we come to having all of this together for us? What was the purpose or?
It was Councilmember Mullins who requested the report right after she was elected. It took us a while to bring it forward.
And, and the request was like a full, comprehensive overview?
Yes. So I, it's been a while, so obviously, it could be that we just, we have, we've been busy with other things. So I requested this report in regards to some of the discussions that we've had in pertaining to policies regarding attendance, and then also some of the perhaps removal of certain members who have failed to be participant at the boards and commissions meetings due to a personal reasons or medical, whatever the case is. Started the conversation at the time. Along with that, we've had multiple issues that have come up throughout the year, were addressed, and specifically, the confusion between, is culture arts the same as art in public places? Confusion regarding who's responsible for which project? And then also the code of conduct and goals that have been set for council members, that we need to visit our boards and commissions' goals, we need to revisit also their code of conduct, which I know it's called something else here, it's expectation, council expectations of boards and commissions. So this was a great opportunity to do a comprehensive report, to come back to council and revisit, since we didn't have a chance, all of us being together, to talk about these items. That's kind of where it started.
Any other questions?
No, that's it. All of my other stuff is specific to each of the asks.
All right. Who would like to go next for questions? Councilor Rosati.
I, I, just one question, then I'll be able to gauge on each of the topics. So the one question I had was regarding the, the Lila. Do we have other private schools involved in our board? Or is it, or is it just, you want to include just one? It's number E on consolidation number two?
We do include parochial schools. I'm just looking at the names of all the schools. I believe it's Bellarmine Jefferson, St. Finbar.
Providence.
Providence High School.
Okay.
So private schools are included.
Okay, that's good. We should bring them in the fold then, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I believe they're the last school that's not in the fold, so.
They, they are. Yeah. Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
I, if it's okay, I do have questions that we, when we address each item, should we just ask the questions then, if that's okay?
Okay. Does anybody have general questions left?
No.
Okay. Okay. I can do the same. Okay, Madam City Clerk, if you'd like to go through each item, and then if you have a question on the item, we know, and then after we've all asked our questions on the item, we can go ahead and deliberate item per item, so that we can kind of have consensus in an orderly manner.
All right. So the first consideration is to establish a consistent member composition, and this is where you, currently, you have a list that tells you exactly how many members are on each. Some of them have nine, some have seven, some have five, and the youth board has 17. So there is some decisions to be made as to whether you want to try to get them more consistent.
Any questions on, on this? No. Okay.
I'm in favor of it being more consistent.
Who would like to go?
So just, can you give us a quick list of all the ones that have nine? Because it's kind of hard to see them all together.
So the boards and commissions that have nine are Burbank Cultural Arts Commission, Sustainable Burbank Commission, and Community Development Goals Committee.
I guess I have a question. Just a general question about, how were the original numbers of these boards established? Was there any protocol or, or policy that went into the number of members for the boards?
I don't have that information, but I can certainly look into our historical records and see if there's any guiding. Maybe Councilmember Mullins can weigh in.
From 2012, that has been consistently the numbers that have been in the BMC. I'm aware of the sustainability and culture arts, they added the additional members from the, whether you live in the city or not, as additional, so we can give an opportunity for the business community to participate in the discussion with the boards and commissions. But since 2012, it's been the same numbers.
Couple of thoughts following up on that. So, you know, I could see kind of a, the seven and five commissions, kind of half, six in one hand, half doesn't, and the other, most of them. The two commissions with nine, though, not the CDBG, but the sustainability and the arts, I can see a value for keeping those particular two at the higher number, just because those are the two boards that are the working boards. They have subcommittees, and they are, they are working a lot on different things, and they need the bodies. The rest of them, though, went over, I'm, I'm kind of neutral on it, what, what everyone else is feeling about it, but those two in particular, I just want to emphasize it. Discussion may be specifically for them.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. I, I agree, but I, I think it's going to be important when we go further and discuss the culture arts and arts in public places, to see what we're doing with the two, so to come up to terms, whether we do nine, less, or more. I mean, obviously, we want, what I'm hearing, and what I'd like to see, yes, is more or consistent, so maybe this is something we consider when we talk about those two.
Yeah, I'd be okay pulling those two specific committees for later, and then the rest of the committees talking about the consistency. Yeah.
Before we move forward, I did have one general question. One of our speakers mentioned it. Have we ever conducted some kind of survey, or an anonymous survey, of all our boards and commissions, just to see what commissioners think about serving regarding any of these topics?
We have not done so since 2022, when I was elected city clerk, and Councilmember Mullins, did you ever do that during your term?
Yeah. It's okay, I'll do the two hats tonight.
Thank you.
We haven't conducted survey to ask them specifically what they think and how many they should be, but we've conducted several trainings and given opportunities for Q and A during the training, and that never really was brought up. for Q and A during the training, and that never really was brought up. Um, it, it, it's more of been the history and the culture to have seven or five or nine, you know, so we never really talked about what their thoughts are, whether it should be less or more. More of anything else, the discussion was, what is our purpose? Uh, are we meeting our goals? And do we need to rewrite our mission statement? That's been just the history of what the questions have been.
Okay. Now, just generally, I'd be interested in, in something like that, a general survey about how they feel, about how their service is going, broad and open about that, that would be interesting, but I'll address that later. Um, question?
Um, the, uh, Sustainable Burbank Commission, um, I'm fine with nine because they do a lot of outreach. My issue with that, and it doesn't look like it's here in the list, is all the liaisons that they have. Their non-voting members, um, from my understanding, and I don't know how many of us have attended the meetings, there's a lot of them that don't show up typically. Um, are we, are we comfortable simply just removing the liaison requirements? And, and honestly, when I go back to the, um, even the art in public places, we have, it says seven members, but one is from the planning commission and one is from Parks and Rec. So like, we're requiring those folks to do double duty as well, so that one could be cut down to five without those two appointment. Like, that to me feels like more consistency, because some have appointments and non-voting members, some have liaisons, and then the rest don't, so.
I'll just very quickly speak to the Sustainability Commission. I know the Vice Mayor and I both, um, serve as liaisons to, council liaisons to that board. Um, they really are as needed. I've seen some of the liaisons kind of attend only when agenda items are pertinent to them. For example, our superintendent is liaison and he's been there when it's an issue concerning the environment in our schools. So that is kind of why that's there. I know it's later on in this list of considerations to make them voting members, so I don't know if you want to consider that there, but, but that's just kind of the, the why behind that. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think, I think we are going to talk about the liaison specifically later, but I think in discussing the member size, it is, I think it's important to understand that the liaisons could be potentially, you know, included in that, and I think simplifying it, maybe sustainability, sustainability, they're not voting members, they're just, they're just liaisons, okay. But with the, uh, what was the other one that had liaisons?
Uh, Arts and Culture. Arts Public Places.
Arts in Public. Arts in Public Places has two voting members who, who are liaisons. Actually, actually, can we address that when we talk about combining the two, uh, committees?
If you don't mind, I'd like to invite Marissa Garcia up. She'd like to address that point.
Thank you. It feels like we all have some questions.
Yeah, we do. I wanted to know what the roles are, what, and have they attended, and yeah.
And I just want to remind everyone, all of these are public meetings, so there's no reason why we can't invite specific people to come, even if they're not a liaison. So there's always that option. Anyway.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, members of the council, Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director. So with regards to Art in Public Places, the, uh, planning board member and the Park and Recreation Board member are actually voting members. They're not liaisons. So they are, uh, so the Art in Public Places Committee is a committee of seven. The code states that it's five members that are appointed by the city council, and two will be, um, an additional two, one representing the planning board and one represent, representing the, uh, Park and Recreation Board. Um, it is my understanding, uh, that the planning board, a lot of our projects, um, are private development projects, so the planning board, having somebody from the planning board, um, is important because they have a, an understanding of, uh, development projects. So the Art in Public Places Committee is there to review, um, uh, proposed, um, art, uh, installation projects that are, um, uh, as part of private development, uh, projects. So their understanding of building, structural integrity, that, that sort of stuff, having that expertise is of value to that group. And then the Park and Recreation Board, um, having, you know, they, they represent the, um, uh, best interest of park and recreation. So I'm just providing that background, not to say that merging the two and finding a way to, uh, have that commission or that new group work with or without those two representatives. But I just wanted to clarify that those two roles are not liaison roles, they are voting members.
Thank you. Does anybody follow ups?
Thank you. Um, I hate to say this, but, um, beside, do they get involved with the discussion and are they attending on a regular basis?
Yes.
And so they are appointed by the actual Parks and Recreation?
Correct.
And the planning. So I'm assuming this was voted on and, and you guys?
Yes.
Okay, so they, in your opinion, there is a need to have both representatives from planning and from parks?
There is value. Um, I, I don't want to say that there is a need. There is value, um, and we do take attendance, um, and they have to follow the attendance standards, um, just like any other, just like the, we, we take an attendance standard for their, uh, their attendance at planning as well as the, um, Art in Public Places.
Because this is important if we decide to consolidate, this is going to be an important part, that we would need to have two members continue with the new role if this is a decision. So that's the reason behind the question. Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for Marissa? No. Uh, I'll go to Councilor Anthony and then Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Um, is there, well, I mean, I guess this is just a general question. There's no reason why we can't make them two newly appointed seats and we as a body make sure that the commission is well-rounded in their skillset?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And my question is, okay, what it sounds like is functionally speaking, those two individuals actually sit on two boards?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. And are there any other, any other boards that have a situation like this that we're aware of? I don't think so, right?
I'm not aware.
No.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Yeah, other than a liaison, but that's not a voting member.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Oh, right. Uh, bringing it all back, I, I think I have to say, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Takahashi's proposal of, of, um, consolidating, but, but separating sustainability and arts because of their, um, event-heavy, uh, calendar. I, I'm sitting as, as one of the council liaisons for sustainability, you notice how much planning work goes into the different events, workshops they host. I haven't been a liaison for the arts commission, but I imagine it's very similar. Um, so, so I, I understand their concerns for, for wanting further members, but love to hear what the rest of you all think.
I, I'm already fine. I mean, this, yeah, this is what we talk, uh, to, to leave, they're all five to seven with the exception of these two, but we'll talk about the culture arts when we get to that.
When we get there.
And I think, um, as far as the youth board, uh, Madam City Clerk, you're recommending to drop it to thirteen, which I know it's been difficult to recruit up to seventeen students, um, and have them attend, so that makes sense. I mean, I'm totally fine with reducing the numbers and make it more manageable for staff.
Absolutely, and that still keeps the youth board, the recommendation still keeps the youth board at a size that allows for, you know, inclusion of all of our schools, and I know that young folks have a lot of extracurriculars, so also allows them to kind of come and go. I just said young folks in a way that makes me sound eighty. Anyways, Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yeah, and I think we're going to talk about that one coming up in a, the youth board specifically.
Youth board, the only consideration there is you need to maintain an odd number, so if we, if you do vote to add the Lila person, then you're going to need to have, uh, four members appointed at large to maintain that odd number.
We're going to get to that in a minute, though. Okay. But we, before we move on from this topic, if we are going to be consistent with all of the boards and commissions are five or seven, except for, we're going to talk about those other two later, we do have CDBG. CDBG is nine, right? Right?
It is nine, and they only meet once or twice a year.
Right, so do we need nine for CDBG that once meets once or twice a year? That's worth talking about.
Could I ask who the staff liaison is for CDBG? Who, who would, who typically is?
We're getting that for you.
While they're doing that, I have attended a few CDBG meetings. Before I was on council, I was like this gentleman here who attended like every single board and commission meeting ever. Um, and, um, I wish I could do it now, I just don't have the time. And, uh, there is a value, I just want to say, there is a value of having multiple viewpoints of views to talk about, because CDBG basically is about, um, and we're going to talk about the name of it later, but is about figuring out where our CDBG funds are going to go to. And they do a lot of that internal debate of, you know, how to distribute the money, and having multiple viewpoints is beneficial. Whether nine is necessary, if seven is sufficient, I think that's, you know, I, I'm pretty even on that, but I do think, if we're going to bring it down, I would think seven for me would be the lowest I'd go.
I agree. Uh, I think nine is excessive unless you have a lot of subcommittees and you meet regularly and there's a lot of projects, but since they meet twice a year, they serve a great purpose because of the CDB funding, we, we need to hear from them. But it's a bit excessive. Again, it's about managing and, and it's about control, you know, the discussion and working with staff.
And it's also about parity. I think we've talked about why are we keeping more members in certain commissions versus others. I want us to be able to look at those commission members and say, this, this was our rationale. And, and these two boards very clearly have events, have like, you know, as we've discussed, which CDBG does not. Do we have that, a staff member?
Oh, I, yes. Were you asking the staff liaison? That's Sinai Gonzalez, and it's overseen by community development.
Oh, community development, okay.
And then if we were to bring it down to seven, would that be just natural attrition we would go to, or we would do it in July? How would it work?
At, at your pleasure. That would be a logical way to do it.
Hmm. Councilor Mullins?
I think, um, in my opinion, it's a lot cleaner and easier to start the new year when we appoint and, and, um, it comes to us in July for August first meeting, everybody goes in there with the expectation knowing. And the other thing too, uh, there might be some, some members who, their term is up, which we won't know, um, you know, they would have to look it up and see if somebody's member, you know, the term is up. So that might be an easy way just to transition into that. May I, um, quick question in regards to all the recommendations, and I'm assuming the answer is yes, but all the departments had reviewed the report and they were okay with the recommendations that we're discussing tonight?
Yes, and in particular, I'd like to thank Ken Berkman from Public Works and Marissa Garcia, who took the lion's share of it because they oversee the most, so. And City Attorney's Office helped too, so it was a group effort. We definitely got input from everybody.
I, I kind of knew that, but I wanted you to hear it. I mean, I want everybody to know that this, this has been approved and blessed by the department heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Alrighty, so we're all in agreement on that for the first item? Great.
And if, if Councilmember Mullins is interested in the expiration term, the terms are expiring. On CDBG, they don't expire until about half of them are July of 2026 and the other half are July of 2028.
Okay.
So something to consider.
Plenty of time. Okay, let's move on to number two then. Um, number two A, remove the requirement to appoint one member of the Art in Public Places Committee from the residential community and one member from the business community, following a recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce.
That practice has not been followed, and in consultation with Ms. Garcia, she said in her twenty years of overseeing this board, it's never been followed, but it is in our code. So when I was creating the staff report, that emerged, and I said, well, we should probably clean that up.
Alright, I'll move to remove it.
Okay. Are we all in agreement with removing something we have not been following for the last, okay, great.
That may be, uh, maybe an obsolete issue anyway, once, if we decide to consolidate the two.
Yes. Alright, number, or letter B, consolidate the commissions. Art in Public Places Committee as a new commission, potentially named the Cultural Affairs Commission. This new Cultural Affairs Commission would maximize and leverage resources, including staffing, to achieve goals and objectives in an efficient manner. Anybody have questions about that recommendation? Councilor Mullins?
Thank you. Um, my question is, um, I'm, I'm, again, I was assuming both sides knew this is coming. Um, and how would you foresee the development of combining both their, um, goals and mission and purpose into that one commission to the cultural affair? And the second question within that, are they going to be, the members from both sides going to be involved in the, in developing that, or is the staff going to be proposing and recommending it to them?
Uh, good evening again, um, Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director. So this topic has been, um, been discussed for a number of years, and, um, so it's not new to, to staff, it's not new to especially some of the, um, uh, longtime, uh, members of these two groups. Uh, in terms of, so yes, and, and staff did, uh, reach out to, and provide the staff report to, uh, members of these two boards in particular, as well as others, uh, to make them aware of this agenda item. Um, as I think you've heard from, from some of the members from both Art in Public Places and Burbank Cultural Arts Commission, I think, um, they understand the, the benefits of, uh, combining the two, just the efficiencies gained. Um, while they're still very passionate about what they do, they understand that for the, the greater good, there might be a benefit in combining. In terms of, of how we go about it, um, uh, you know, I, I don't know if it's a pleasure of the council to, to move in that direction. You know, staff doesn't have, you know, the right answer or the perfect answer. Um, I, you know, we have some thoughts. Uh, we do have consultants that have worked with us to develop the cultural arts framework, which is essentially our, um, plan for the next five years, that we can engage to help us make some recommendations. Um, we do know, um, that there are surrounding cities, um, that have cultural arts, uh, you know, commissions or groups, um, that, um, do oversee both responsibilities that we can look, and that's something that staff and/or, um, we can retain the services of consultants who, who can provide some recommendations that we can then bring, uh, to both groups and get their input. I think it would be important to get their input and then bring those recommendations to council. I, I don't know that, um, any of us have a timeline, like, we need to do this tomorrow. We want to be very thoughtful, we want to make sure that what steps we take are, uh, make sense, and, um, we want to be very respectful to our existing members, um, if it's through attrition, um, you know, if it's disbanding both groups and creating a brand-new group, but I'm here in a composition of nine and have people reapply, whatever that looks like, we're very open to that, and I think the best approach is to, um, get everybody's input and make some recommendations to the city council, if, if that is a desire of council, and then come back. Um, that would be my, my recommendation to, to do that. Um, you know, they, they are both very amazing groups, uh, they do amazing work. Um, we can find a way to, to consolidate the great work that they do into one and, uh, continue on serving the city and expanding the arts. Um, there is value in tangible public art, and there is so much value in expanding, which is one of council's goals, right? Um, you know, art, um, in various mediums, whether it's performance and art exhibits. There's so many things that we can do, and so, um, I would not want to rush that process.
Great. Thank you for that.
Sure.
And I think it's important that, um, both side of the members understand and know that we will be working with them.
Yes.
Because they, they both do amazing work and they bring their own talent on each side, and, uh, I'm sure they would, um, have a great appreciation that we're involving them in the process, and then that we can learn from them, hiring a consultant and working with staff, all these are great ideas. There's also that budgetary issue that we, one side has, the other side doesn't have, and so, you know, we continue the budget. There's a lot of these questions. And, um, the length of meetings, a, a lot of questions came up in the emails today with concerns, and I just want to assure everyone who emailed us that all these questions and, um, input that we received will be taken in consideration. This is not something we're deciding to do unless. This is not something we're deciding to do unless start in the next three months and we're going to move forward and do it. It's going to take time to get us there. And I know that you're very considerate to how we move forward with the process. Counsel, if, I mean, we talked about the makeup and I think this is one deserving, you know, perhaps the nine members, because we have 16, I think, in total between the two. So with time and maybe some stepping down, resigning, maybe we don't fill these positions. So a lot of these discussions will come back to us and I'll look forward to seeing your input. Thank you.
I have one follow-up for you. When, what is the schedule of their meetings? When do each of these meet?
So the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission meets at 9:00 AM the second Thursday of the month. And the Art and Public Places Committee is an on-call. They do for convenience and just convenience in terms of, you know, just making sure that, you know, for staff, for ease of staff trying to schedule an on-call meeting with seven people. And for them, for our committee members, they set aside the time. We, they've agreed to six o'clock the first Monday of the month. So if there is an Art and Public Places meeting, they generally would meet the first Monday of the month. However, we have had meetings other days. It's again, depending on a developer and a project that if they need to move forward, we will schedule that. But that's typically when the two groups meet. So that will be something that would be taken into consideration as we move forward.
Yeah, that's why I ask, because it may even be a logistical change for some folks. Like let's say they agreed to serve because it's on-call and it's not as often. But now they're being asked to meet on a regular basis or whatever is decided, right? So it may be a consideration in itself. But I, just to add to what Councilwoman Mullins said, I am in favor of consolidating them. We have, you know, I know nobody who is on there right now, but we have folks who apply, who confuse the two quite often.
Yes.
And who, you know, maybe have interest or describe things that one commission has done, but attribute it to the other. So it'd be really, I think, appropriate to have a consolidated space for our arts and might make us work more efficiently. Any other thoughts on this?
Do you have my consensus on that? Yeah.
Great. And then a follow-up question?
Thank you. So as you all know, I'm the liaison for the Cultural Arts Commission and I see how much work they do. And I'm curious, from a staff perspective, if the two were consolidated, how would the public, Art and Public Places work be integrated into the cultural arts? Would it be integrated into the regular agenda and a regular meeting? Or would it be like a subcommittee that some people, how are you possibly envisioning that how this might come together?
It's difficult for me to answer that. I believe it would be integrated into a meeting. I believe we need a majority of the committee or the commission to take action. And they have to approve a project moving forward. So our subcommittees are three or less, right, or three members. So it's not a majority. So I, it's hard, again, I am just speaking off of just what I think would happen, but that would be something that would be part of our analysis and recommendations as we move forward.
Yeah, and as you know, the agendas are full. Like there's a lot going on with arts and cultural arts. So how long do the Arts and Public Places meeting generally go? How much content is in those meetings?
I believe it's typically a couple of hours.
Okay, so it would be every time a new project comes up, it would be a couple hours worth of?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. The Art and Public Places meeting or Cultural Arts Commission meeting?
So I'm sorry, my question probably wasn't clear. Is, what's the length of the Art and Public Places meetings?
It depends on what's on the agenda and the proposed project.
Okay.
It could be an hour if there's one project. It could be less than that. Again, it just depends on the project. If it's a small project, it's a short presentation. Typically, how those presentations go, the developer will go in and they might have a big presentation and they will have the artists there and, you know, there'll be a lot of dialogue and conversation. Or they might have multiple art installations for their development project. And so that might take a lot of time, but they're not very lengthy. Generally, they're not multiple hours.
Okay, because I think the Cultural Arts Commission with the nine members has a pretty full agenda. They're already doing quite a lot. So integrating the Art and Public Places agenda into it will be a bit of a, you know, puzzle. And I want to make sure that as we do that, that we take into consideration what we're already, that the commissions are already doing and just to see kind of how that was going to go. And I'm also curious about the specific voting members on Art and Public Places from the Planning Board and the Park and Rec. If we were not to include that in the new merged group, would it be possible to have representatives from those folks specifically invited to those meetings to make sure that they're there and aware and providing some sort of acknowledgement or input? Is there a mechanism that that could be created?
That's something we can look into.
Okay, that'd be great.
Well, that's basically the liaison.
Yeah, that would be a non-voting member.
Right. Well, there's, so generally the liaisons that I've experienced so far that are quite cross-committee just sit and receive. They receive, they understand. But part of what the benefit of having the Art and Public Places voting members is that they participate in the discussion, they give feedback and input, right? And so a liaison is great, but I think for this particular thing, because their input is so important, is to have ability for them to have input as well.
You know, I appreciate that, the thoughts, and it's something that we will take back and as we do some analysis, we'll take that into consideration. Because the cities of Brea, West Hollywood, Santa Monica, Culver City, all have cultural arts commissions that balance the two and we will see how they do it, right? So, you know, I don't want to reinvent.
Absolutely.
Reinvent the wheel, but knowing that, you know, it's important for us in Burbank. And so we'll see if there's a way that we can make that work.
Okay, so if it's okay with my colleagues to just, if we decide to merge it, to go ahead and find a way that we can make sure those voices are from those boards?
You're going to have to come back with that.
Yes.
All of this will come back because they're ordinances.
Yes. Great. So I think you said you had one more question?
I had one more thing on this. Cultural Affairs Commission removes the word arts from the title. So personally, I would either like to keep it the Cultural Arts Commission, but not all art is cultural and not all culture is arts, so maybe Arts and Culture Commission.
Yeah. I like that. I don't know. How do you all feel about it?
I don't know. Do we want to be nice to him? The name will be part of our report back.
Great. Alrighty, so I think we've given sufficient direction there. Okay, so we have two items next that are, I think, pretty straightforward. I will let you all know, because I got to go to the restroom, I agree with both C and D on number two. Vice Mayor, all yours.
Madam St. Clark, did you want to present the next one or two?
Sure. The next two up for consideration are name changes. So the first is changing the name of the Community Goals Committee to a more descriptive name such as the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Goals Committee.
Yes.
Yes.
No brainer.
Do we even need the word goals in there or, I guess, to know that that's what they're doing, right? Community Development Block Grant Committee.
I agree.
Yeah, because it's not really even goals, it's distribution of funds or recommendations, so.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, CDBG Committee makes sense.
CDBG Committee.
Yeah.
Say that three times fast.
CDBG.
Okay. We're okay with that?
Alright. Got it. And then the other one is to consider changing the name of the Infrastructure Oversight Board. And I will say, in my experience, that is confusing. People will call and say, I'm not a tradesman. Can I still apply? To change that to the Capital Projects Oversight Committee.
I have a question. In some of the other cities that I've seen have a similar board, they call it a public works board. Is that, was that considered? Is that not appropriate or we, like?
I believe, I vaguely recall, the name was actually derived from the ballot measure.
Right. I remember that.
But other than that.
Wait, if it's the ballot measure, can we even change it?
Yeah, you're not changing, you're not affecting the tax.
And if I recall correctly, that they're in the ordinance, it didn't say a specific name for the board, just that there was an oversight board for the funds.
This is Ken Berkman from Public Works and he can answer further questions.
Yeah, thank you. When she was here, Madam Mayor, Counsel. The Infrastructure Oversight Board, I think, is appropriately named. And I think Capital Projects Review is only one facet, though a big facet of their job. They receive reports from other departments, CDD and parks, could be the urban forest, could be the specific plans, all these things that eventually have impacts on our ability to design, build, operate, and maintain our infrastructure. Maintain, maintenance is also part of the programs that they review and we've provided with them. So I think Capital Projects only doesn't represent really their overall responsibilities to assist counsel with advising counsel on infrastructure itself. And public works boards and commissions and committees typically have a more overarching, I think, responsibility. So infrastructure itself, I think, is a good, both specific and also broad enough topic for a name for them.
If I could follow up. So you're saying a public works board, you feel, is too big of a phrase and capital improvement is too narrow? And so, I mean, infrastructure oversight to me sounds like what it does, but I've just never heard other places call it that. And that's why I always went to public works board, because that's what I've seen other places call it.
Yeah, Councilmember, to the City Attorney's point, I was going to mention that too. It was established with Measure P, so it does make sense that way.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And it was unique for Burbank because the tax dollars. I do have a question to the City Clerk. I don't see it in our report. So I'm wondering, I was looking to see where the discussion is.
It's missing something? This emerged during a meeting with staff and I thought I would, since we were discussing name changes, I would add it in.
Okay, so I just want to make sure if the public was following this, because I leaned over and I said, I don't know, did I miss it? So thank you. So we clarified that this was added.
Script only, yeah.
Okay, so your recommendation to change it from, just to leave it as it is then, Infrastructure Board?
So here, so I get that typically public works board are a little bit more broad, but I think one of the reasons why we're consolidating names, changing names, so that the general public knows what we're doing. When people ask me about IOB, I basically tell them, oh, that's our public works board. And they immediately, oh, I see.
But the funds, the funds are much broader than just public works.
Sure.
There are parks and recreation. Also, the phrase public works board connotes some element of operations and the IOB doesn't oversee operations. It's new infrastructure.
You're right. And in the strict definition of public works and in our city department public works, I think for me, it's because there's an American tradition of what they think of public works is. So I think that may be confusing. So I'm comfortable keeping the name as it is because it is directly descriptive of what the job is, so.
I agree. I think we should just leave it Infrastructure Oversight Board. I mean, there is an explanation what they do, so.
To that point, actually, I do have a comment. I think at least what the materials that I read, speaking of the Measure P, is that I did not see in the description that it says that it's there for to oversight for Measure P funds. So if we can make that really explicit in the description, that'd be great. You know, as having sat on that board when it was started and for a few years, it makes sense to me too, infrastructure. But I also know, in my experience, when I talk about it, folks don't know what I'm talking about. I'm not quite sure how to solve that issue, but I think that if at least the description is clear, it's simplified. I like the version that's presented in the staff report, add Measure P to it, just kind of very succinct. And I think also sometimes it's confusing what is infrastructure, what's not. So maybe a little bit more detail of examples of infrastructure. For example, capital improvement projects, street paving, you just kind of give some examples and that might be helpful too.
Maybe broaden their description to include capital improvement and everything else that you mentioned, I think that might help. And then we'll see if that would make it easier.
Those are good ideas. When we send out the press release recruiting new members, we can add a little bit more substantive description of what they do, because I do get questions on that and we don't include a lot of detail like that, so that's an easy fix.
Councilor Anthony?
I mean, just as a last hail mary, is staff open to throwing out some phrases or terms? And maybe would include, I don't know. Do you guys have anything else that, thoughts on a name that might help us thread this needle? I don't know.
Honorable Mayor, Counsel, what I would suggest, because I did hear this at a previous meeting from our chair, and I think it's a good solution that the City Clerk mentioned, is to modify our applications to identify exactly what the roles and responsibilities are for the Infrastructure Oversight Board.
Okay. Hold on. I liked Infrastructure Projects Oversight Committee, but that's fine.
And to be fair, if someone's applying for that board, it's a good idea for them to, you know, look up what infrastructure is and to learn about it. And so maybe, maybe it's a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a hurdle that's good to go over in order to be qualified.
But before I walked in, we're all in agreement about CDBG, right? Okay, thank you. Because that, I think that one was, I don't blame anybody for not understanding that.
We took out the word goals, though.
I, oh, that's so great. That's what I wanted too. Great minds think alike. Alrighty, so we're all in agreement, keep IOB, change the other one. Okay. D, the allowing members of the youth board, including middle school voting, alternates to be voting members.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Same. So, yes, we're all in agreement, yes. All right. Add a member to the youth board drawn from the high school student body of the Lice International Lila de Los Angeles School. Yes.
Yep.
Great. Oh, parlons français.
Councilmember Takahashi can give us the correct pronunciation.
All right, and then the next one is reducing the youth board to 13 members, 10 of whom, I'm not going to read the whole thing, go for it.
So currently we have, it's 17 members?
Yes.
And how many of them are appointed at large?
It's four, one moment.
I'm trying to find it. Where did I, I lost it. Oh, here it is, okay. Four from the schools. Three fifths. So there's, okay, so there's seven at large.
By three fifths, Counsel.
So we could have multiple kids from each school. Is there a reason why we do that? Is that?
Well, there's another category. So of the 17, if you look on the bottom of page six.
You've got the high schools, you've got the middle schools.
Four of the high schools.
But then you've got seven at large who could be a middle or a high school. So some schools have two or three reps showing up. What was the original impetus for that? Were kids being iced out? Like, was it a popularity contest? I don't understand.
Good evening again. Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation. This one was number, well, it's been a while. We had a large, we received many applications and at that time, the council at that time did not want to cut anybody. So instead, they decided to select everybody.
When was that?
Blame Councilmember Tolomantus on that, on Frutos.
Yeah, but believe it also was, I don't want to name names, but it was even, even some before that. But yeah, so it was, they want, they just appointed everybody who had applied. So hence, hence that's why the, the group ended up with 17.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to give some cold water to these kids. This is life. I would like to recommend that we remove all of the at-large members and just one representative from each school, adding Lila, that gives us 11.
I think it would be staff's recommendation that we do have some at-large. I think it's in. I think it would be staff's recommendation that we do have some at-large. I think it's important, um, uh, to have some, I, I understand.
No, no, what was, so talk to me about that. Why would we, why do we need X? Like, what happens in that? How do those kids get appointed as opposed to the other kids?
The school, um, uh, recommends, the school makes the selection and recommends.
And then there'd be four that apply directly to us outside of that school. So for us, we're looking at them and saying, okay, the school passed on you and now you want us to appoint you.
Mr. Diego Savayo, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Marissa. Uh, Diego Savayo is, um, Assistant Director of, uh, Park and Recreation over Recreation Services. Uh, the value of the at-large, um, group, um, is, is several fold, right? One, we're not taking into account the kids that are homeschooled, right? So that's an important voice. We're also, we're also considering all residents of Burbank. But let's say a resident of Burbank has decided to take their education to, you know, they graduated early and decided to, uh, take an opportunity at a community college, right? Uh, there's also folks that are potentially going to Loyola High School or other schools, but that's still a very important voice for us to, to, to recognize. So we do want to reduce the number of, uh, participants, but we also want to create opportunities for those youth voices. And so happy to continue to answer that question if you need more clarity.
That is interesting. Um, now it says in here that they can't be over twenty. So it could be a kid who's graduated and is going to a community college.
Yeah, early graduation.
I was, I was sixteen, so, you know.
I would have appointed you. I totally would have appointed you. Okay, alright. So four is what you're recom- or whatever the, to keep the odd number.
So if we, if we add Lila, if we add Lila, we would have eleven, right? And then if we add three, we would have an even number. So we would add, to have four, to give us that odd number. So that would be fifteen.
Alright, gotta get those homeschool kids and the community college kids.
Give them a chance, man.
Also, you know, there's one kid at one school who's trying to go up against the valedictorian who gets appointed and they're like, but I'm good too. Alright, I got you.
Uh, I, I, what I would advocate for the, for this group is that, one, highly engaged, right? You know, we get about eighty to eighty-five percent attendance i- of this group. Um, and I think the most important part of this, uh, change or recommendation is that we want to give everybody that comes to those meetings and are actively participating in those meetings, um, uh, voting rights, right? So not alternate, we want to make sure that they're fully heard, uh, during those, during those meetings.
Alright, any, any other questions on, on this one? It's a great experience, the more the mayor on this, who knows, those may be the future folks in these seats one day. So let's give them a chance to, um, serve their community. Alright, so we're all in agreement on staff's recommendation, number thirteen? Or sorry, number, letter F?
Letter F.
Alright, moving on to the attendance policy and causes for removal. Questions for this one?
Have the city clerk tell us which is to.
If you could repeat the recommendation on this one, thank you.
So currently we have a rather, um, complicated absence policy. And, uh, I have actually an exhibit on that. That, you, you're familiar with this? You just had it emailed to you. It's a table that staff puts together. You just, you just, you just received this a couple of days ago via email. So there's a whole matrix of how many meetings they miss and which quarter and seventy, somebody has to calculate what seventy-five percent is. So instead of that system, staff is recommending that, um, we would maintain some of our current practices. To wit, a member's second absence would continue to trigger a warning. So you're absent twice, you get a warning. A, you can only have three absences. This is your official warning. Um, and then the second part of that, instead of relying on the appointment date or a quarter system, council would amend the code to apply to situations where a member misses three meetings, any three meetings, not consecutive, during a twelve-month period. That twelve-month period would roll from August first to July thirty-first. And then the absence count would reset the following August first. If a member's absent a third time, myself, my office, we would implement the existing procedure. We would create a staff report and we would place it on a council agenda for you to vote on and just, and deliberate whether you would like to remove the member or excuse the absences. Now, should a council excuse three absences and then the member misses a fourth meeting, council may wish to amend the code so that, A, upon the member's fourth absence, I once again go through the process of bringing it to you and you make the final decision via a staff report and a vote. Or you could empower staff to, and authorize staff to have the member automatically removed upon the fourth absence.
I'm gonna go Councilor Mullins and then Anthony.
Thank you. I think this is, um, an important part of our discussion tonight. And that was really what drove us to have this report come back, which is attendance is, um, really vital for the, um, continuation of meetings and quorum and having a good discussion among the members. And as we all understand that sometimes things come up in life and you're gonna miss meetings. But I, having to miss three meetings, consecutive meetings, or having to miss seventy-five percent in a quarter, that really puts an impact and it shows, it demonstrates to others that maybe the individual's not really, um, as dedicated. Mind you, there's really valid reasons to why people miss meetings. Medical, personal, vacation, life. But there's, you know, just like the rest of us sitting up here. We know Tuesday night, and I know, um, Councilmember Rosati's gonna rebuttal me on that cause he's had perfect attendance on the planning board. But it, it is a serious matter and we hear about it from other, um, members who are impacted by having somebody missing the meetings. The, the other thing is it really puts council to in a position where we have to, do we want to excuse it? Do, is this good enough to excuse or not? Uh, I think the last one that we had here, we dived into really lengthy discussion whether vacation was, or wedding, or, you know, there was a lot of conversation about it. And so, uh, I think I'm in agreement, uh, with the city clerk that we do have three, we leave the three in a, in a, a year period or a period of a year. However, eh, we had discussions, couple of things. One is sometime we appoint a member, um, for seven months because they're filling in for somebody else's position, right? They could be there for six months, seven months. If they miss three meetings in seven months, there's something wrong. They definitely need to be removed. Um, so I'm in agreement to do that. The one thing that I want to, uh, bring up is when there's special meetings being called in and they're not regularly scheduled meetings, we should not penalize the member because somebody could be on vacation and then a special meeting is called. So I think that's important not to count that against them because they don't know that there's gonna be a special meeting. So I want to make sure that we're fair to the members as well. I also like, uh, the idea of, yes, it comes to council. If we decide, because they had really valid reasons why they missed three meetings and we give them a chance, if they miss another meeting, that's the fourth meeting, I think, um, I'm happy to empower the city clerk to
Automatic.
Automatically send that letter saying, thank you for your service and this is our policy. And let's go ahead and open the vacancy for somebody else. I think that's nice and clean. So it doesn't have to come back and we discuss the same issues for that member. So that's just my input. Thank you.
I just had a quick follow-up question on, on that, cause I, I noticed the separation and I had the question about irregular versus regular meetings. What is the process for our meeting cancellations, especially for these irregular meetings? Let's say, uh, we schedule one, how long do we give folks notice when we schedule it? And then how long of a notice do we give them when we cancel a meeting like that?
So the, the, for example, the arts in public places, that's an on-call meeting. There's no requirement to formally cancel the meeting via a printed piece of paper that gets posted outside of City Hall and posted at libraries. The, uh, obligation of the city is to tell the members, we're not going to have this meeting this first Monday, I believe. It was first Monday of the month. It's a placeholder. And then it's up to the liaison to communicate with the members to say it's, it's canceled. So we do have an obligation to email them, call them, make sure they know it's not happening. But there's no requirement, um, to post it from the city attorney perspective. We, um, always advise the boards and commissions to contact their attorney and the city attorney's office for guidance. But they don't have to formally post like an agenda, uh, cancellation of agenda.
What about when scheduling the meetings? Cause I, I, I'm just thinking from the perspective of somebody in the community. If I'm serving on one of these commissions and I have my work schedule, I have other schedules and a meeting pops up. How, how, um, how do I say this? How long is the notice? Like, when do I find out? You know, is it like, could it possibly be like, the meeting's tomorrow? What does the period look like, is my question. Do we have that formalized anywhere?
I believe, and I'll ask the city attorney to weigh in, I believe it's seventy-two hours for a regular meeting and twenty-four for a special.
So the requirement is in the affirmative, if you're gonna have a meeting, it must be agendized for a regular meeting seventy-two hours ahead of time. We typically do four days, uh, well, for the, the ones that start at the beginning of the week. We're always end of the week for the next. So for the ones that don't have, uh, a schedule, you wouldn't post a, a cancellation like art in public places. But for instance, for Planning Commission, it meets in the code, two days, uh, two meetings a month, second and fourth Mondays. So the custom is to post the cancellation because people expect that there will be a meeting unless the cancellation is posted. Most other boards and commissions only meet once a month. And that's specified, the day, it's the, you know, fourth Thursday or the, you know, the first Monday in the case of, I think, sustainability. And so the ones that are scheduled in the municipal code, they do post a cancellation just so the public knows that there will not be a meeting. There's not a legal obligation, but it's a courtesy that Burbank has done as long as I've been here.
And we try to do that in advance as much as we can. It's sometimes hard, but as soon as we know, we will try to post that.
Okay, and, um, I, I, I think I'm gearing some more questions from my colleagues. So I'll let you all ask and I'm guessing we have the same line of questioning. So I'll, I'll let Councilor Rosati and then Anthony.
I was just gonna say, uh, we've always gotten an email asking if we could be present on a certain day, so we had a quorum. So, um, there is, in twelve years, I've always gotten plenty of advanced notice. And, um, the staff is always mindful to make sure that we did have a quorum available. So there's that give and take. So it's not, it doesn't just pop up and then you're on vacation. So it, it, my twelve-year experience, that's the way it's been.
Councilor Anthony?
And in my understanding, I know some boards and commissions will, that, on a given month, will fall on a holiday or a, a federal holiday or something where it's dark. And there's a discussion ahead of time of, well, when are we meeting? Can we all make it? And if there's a special meeting, I know staff tends to do their diligence and talk to the members and say, are you available this day? Are you available that day? So there is that conversation back and forth. So I, you know, I, I think that process is okay, but if we're talking about special meetings outside of regularly scheduled meetings, I, I, I think there should be, those should not be counted towards attendance. I- in addition, I feel like the only, the only, uh, uh, commission that does have special meetings regularly is the Arts in Public Places. But if we're coming back with that commission already, I guess the only other one would be Community Development Block Grant, but they, they're pretty regular on their schedules, right, when they meet?
They have a period of the year bef- right before council votes on the CDBG funds. So they meet a couple of times usually before then.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm guessing moving forward, we're probably gonna have very few special meetings other than a reschedule for a holiday. And that's usually checked with, ahead of time, the, the, the members.
Great. And, and that's why I asked, cause I felt it, it's important, right? Special meetings, if, sure, you're used to Wednesdays, you meet for the library board and suddenly there's a special meeting on an off day, that's very different than a commission that meets irregularly. And it leaves murky territory to say, well, do you then impose the three absence rule on them or do you not? But since we're changing it a little bit, I, I even, looking back at the, uh, two letters before, when talking about the Arts Commission, I would love for them to go on some type of regular schedule. It, it makes it easier for everybody and, and makes the attendance really clear, you know?
And I, I think that would probably happen because the culture arts have regularly scheduled meetings and they have a, a heavy agenda, not that the others don't, but I think that's gonna happen. It would be a very rare situation where a special meeting would occur outside of a regular scheduled meeting. But we have to think of those meetings in the event that it happens and then, so we're being fair that if we, if in the, in addition to the regularly scheduled meeting, we have a special meeting, then if they can't make the meeting, then it shouldn't be counting against them.
Exactly.
And, and it, just to be, to make it simple, because we had to deal with that issue over, you know, the meetings weren't scheduled, I didn't know, so it's, it's very clear.
And it's outside of their, their regular.
Exactly. But if it's in, within your regular scheduled meeting and you miss three meetings, that's a different story.
Uh, uh, last thing I would say is, um, s- you know, certain f- members of commissions and boards will have their schedule planned out. And they have a day set aside for that meeting. But if it lands on, like I said, a holiday and it has to move, that is considered a special meeting, that moved meeting. But this person who has been consistent and has created their schedule, can't make that meeting, that shouldn't be penalized to them. So I think that is consistent with that.
But those meetings are typically discussed with a way in advance. And knowing, like, I know, um, the senior citizen board that I serve on, I know they go dark. You know, a couple of times or, you know, during the year and during the holidays. And so this is way in advance, cause they do a calendar, the same for transportation. So it, just like we do a calendar for ourselves on council, we know in advance, I believe they all know advan- and I'm getting, uh, headshaked, there were the, yes, they do. So it's not a surprise.
But do we not call those special meetings when they have to move those to different off?
Well, if it falls on a holiday and it gets rescheduled, to Councilmember Mullins' point, it's usually discussed at least a month in advance.
But I thought the commissions, they call them special meetings if it's not on their regular sched- no, is that not right?
Generally, at least in my experience, it's been, if it's on a holiday or even the month of the holiday, sometimes it's dark. It's a dark meeting for the most of the time.
Alright, I'll, I'll retract that.
Vice Mayor Takahashi. To follow up on your question, Councilmember, um, on both the boards I've been on and the ones that I've been liaisoned to, is that they are regular meetings, but they're, they're scheduled at each year, that's the whole year is scheduled, kind of like we do. And it's gotten much better too. There, I have been on commissions where it's like, oh shoot, next month, our meeting lands on a Monday, that's a holiday, let's reschedule. That doesn't happen as much anymore. I haven't seen it happen anymore. It seems like the staff is really consistent. I'm making sure that every year they go through the whole calendar. But I could see every once in a while, it might happen that something catches you off guard, right? And so I would say that if it were to come up, that, um, it looks, I see Ms. Garcia's here to answer this. But if it were to come up that something was moved last minute, even if it's a regular meeting, I'm, I agree that it's not really fair to, to count that against somebody whose last-minute schedules change. But if it's something that was scheduled at the beginning of the year and everybody knows it's coming, that's, that's a regular meeting.
I would agree.
Good evening again. Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation. Um, I can only speak for Parks and Recreation, uh, boards, commissions, and committees, which there are a handful. We do typically will look at the, uh, beginning of the year, we'll look at the calendar in advance. Uh, the, the respective group, um, will have a conversation about, uh, rescheduling a meeting if it falls on a holiday. The group will also discuss, uh, going dark on, uh, typically, right, a summer or December holidays. That is discussed, um, uh, in advance. And so the, uh, board, commission, or committee will agree upon the calendar date similar to, as, as Councilmember Mullins mentioned, similar to the city council. We have on occasion had special meetings. We have on occasion had special meetings. Uh, one example that came to my mind, um, was, uh, the opportunity to participate in the Elephant Parade, uh, and a decision had to be made. So, that was a special meeting.
And, and did you call it special meeting?
We didn't call it a special meeting. So, that was a meeting that was held, um, separate from our monthly meetings. This was separate from a, so, that's a difference. I just wanna provide that clarification. It's, it doesn't happen often, uh, but it does happen on occasion where we have to have a special meeting, but we do, uh, provide, uh, we do post 72 hours in advance, uh, for special meetings.
And in your, in your experience, having a meeting not meet on its regular day because of a holiday or because of some other conflict, we typically don't consider those special meetings, we just consider them rescheduled, regular meetings. Okay, then I'm comfortable with the special meeting exemption, knowing that it's only for the rare occasion that we do have special meetings. Okay.
Great, so, uh, we all had a lot of questions. Any more questions?
Automatic removal?
I was about to, so, so Councilwoman Mullen's made kind of a comprehensive proposal there, including that automatic removal. How do we feel about what she's proposed now that we've asked questions about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We reiterate, I think I might have stepped out right when you proposed that. What was, what was the proposal?
To basically go with the recommendations of the city clerk, the first three, um, absences within that one-year period, including anyone who's serving less than a full year, if they're absent three, um, three meetings, then it comes to council, actually following the steps that they will be directly notified by the city clerk and,
The second one.
Yes, after the second one, a warning will be sent. The third one will have a report come back to council. We'll consider either removing them or keeping them on, giving them another chance based on their situation. Uh, however, if they continue, um, having another absence, that will be their fourth, then the city clerk should have the power to automatically remove them. We don't need it to have it come back to council. And, and exclude, uh, special meetings as we discussed in length here, uh, that would not be counting as a mark against them being an absent.
I, um, request to mo- to slightly modify that, to consider that. Um, so one of the, hopefully that does not, does not happen very often. But one of the things that I think is sometimes difficult is when this type of thing is brought up to us, we're going through this person's kind of personal experience and whatnot, and they may or may not want us to do that. Maybe they are just like, you know what, you're right, I've missed three times, I don't really wanna be talked about at council. So, I'm wondering if, what, what do you guys think about after the three-time, to ask them to say, hey, it's been three times, um, that-
Offer resignation.
Would you like to resign, or would you like the council to deliberate?
That actually happens, um, and I know Madam City Clerk, you can chime in anytime. They are given an opportunity to step down because there's a lot of emails and dialogues that goes behind the scenes with staff, uh, when the city clerk gives them a warning or the staff gives them a warning. There, there is a lot of conversations that go on, and a lot of time they step down because of work reasons or whatever, uh, medical reasons, but, uh, they always have the opportunity to do it, to step down.
Well, I would just say, to your point, I think we should put that in paper on writing, saying, if they hit three, you give them the opportunity to resign or go before council.
It's not an automatic council will deliberate, deliberate, although maybe that's to your point, that's, that's the policy behind the scenes, we just don't know. But just make it, I guess, more clear.
The city clerk would not bring it to you because they would decide to resign. What we would receive is what we've received in the past. You know, so that resigned from her position and we move on, so it would never come back to council.
Um, I did have one question, this may be a question for the city attorney. Have we discussed or addressed the concerns of when somebody, uh, reaches those three absences and perhaps it's due to a medical reason and it gets very interesting because it's their personal medical history? Is there a way to address that? Cause we've had those questions, in, at least, I, I know it came up in Sustainability. It's come up in other commissions where people say, well, I'd love to plead my case, or, you know, I was going through this medical bout or something happened, but I don't wanna publicly tell the entire world that X and Y medical thing was happening to me.
Yeah, you, you currently don't have a procedure for that.
Could we? Is that something, is, is that even possible?
It's possible.
If I, if I, if I could offer a suggestion, uh, when the three comes forward, I know you offer them a resignation, uh, you offer them the op- you know, the opportunity to come to us, you could simply expla- I mean, I would love to put it down here that they have the opportunity to reach out to us individually. There's nothing wrong with that, for them to lobby their case to each of us. Um, I know people do that when they're trying to get on the board. So, having a private conversation and saying, hey, I'm talking to you one-on-one, could we not discuss it publicly? I'm comfortable with that.
The problem with that is they're gonna reach out to each of us, and then we're gonna wanna talk about it and deliberate. We can't publicly, or it, it creates a problem. I mean, I like the old days where if you missed three, you were gone. There was no ifs, ands or buts about it. You missed three? We, nobody, there was no judge or jury in it, it just took all the, all of that out of it and just you were gone.
So, there's no right, there's no substantial property right to participate on a volunteer board or commission, and you're charged with appointing people that can carry out the functions of the boards. So, then you have to ask, are they able to carry out the functions of the boards? So, you could do anything, um, but you could end up having meetings that can't happen because there's not a quorum. As soon as that number drops, then the burden is on everyone else to not miss anything, and of course, uh, Councilmember Rosati could be counted on to never miss a meeting and uphold his end of the quorum, but-
I only ever miss one meeting at Transportation. I guess that doesn't count.
How many years?
That's true.
It was just a thought out there, right, for, for folks, cause I can think of a situation, obviously it'd be narrow, but let's say you have surgery and, and you can't be out and about for a specific number of months, right? And it just happens that you missed those three, right? And I understand wanting to explain yourself, but not wanting to do it publicly?
Well, so there are a couple of hardship exemptions under the Brown Act, and there is the ability to participate with a limited number of meetings, teleconference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, they could reach out to us individually, and, you know, to our discretion to not discuss it publicly.
Yeah, we could have the regular, um, it's, it's okay, Madam Mayor, we could have the regular process, and then if an individual feels that they really want us to vote just without talking about it, they could come to us and say, hey, I know you're coming up with this and this is why, and just, please just vote without discussing, and they could ask us privately, and it doesn't have to be a formal process.
Which, which I think the five of us up here would know why each of us is making the decision we're making, but I just wanted to throw it out there because it's, it has been a question that's come up a couple of times. So, Councilwoman Mullen?
I'm, I'm fine with that. The only problem is, um, I'm hoping that they reach each one of us, because if some of us have that knowledge, because they feel comfortable talking to one or the other and they don't call, or we don't hear from all of them, it's, it's gonna be, it needs to be discussed in public either way, because you may know because you reached out to the, they reached out to you, but they may not reach out to me, so it kinda leaves you in the dark to know why you're making that decision.
Again, that's up to them and their lobbying efforts.
Exactly, so I'm saying the expectation.
Any procedure that implies they're gonna be the hub in a hub-and-spoke, seriate-a meeting, so. You're, you're, you're gonna have a problem where they say, well, every, so you're the last person.
Right.
Or you're the third person, and the plea is, well, nobody else has a problem with it, and now you have a Brown Act violation. So, you would not wanna memorialize that.
I, I see what you're, 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 you, you're looking for, because I, I asked the city attorney in our meeting, you know, similar, we need a policy. You need to be clear to us to say when they can actually be removed, and can we remove them for specific reasons? Uh, I mean, for years been dealing with this issue because there are people, he did not wanna come to council, and they end up resigning because, like you're saying, I don't want to go and tell them, you know, tell everybody my issues. Where are people who had, you know, cancer that said, yes, I'm willing to go and send the letter, and they participated via, you know, Zoom during the public, public meeting? Um, so, i- and this is why I think it's important, if they wish to come to us, w- we're here, we're gonna evaluate as we usually do and say yes or no, based on our experience and based on what we're hearing from also the city clerk and the staff. Um, because evaluating case by case, I've seen in both sides that the other one come, they don't wanna come, and if we put it in writing, there's always variation of different reasons why people cannot be there every single meeting.
I think one thing I, I would like is maybe if we put in the warning, um, because I, it may be that, you know, we all know, but maybe somebody who's serving on a commission doesn't know or doesn't think to say, oh, I could have been exempt for this, or I could have had this, uh, opportunity under the Brown Act. So, under the warning, the second time mentioning like, hey, this is a warning, you've missed these meetings, please remember that if this is a medical reason, these are the options available to you. So, if they come to the third time and you miss it, that's on you. You, you were given like the very, like, option you could use.
I, I wanna give shout-out to, um, David Krisky and staff for the Transportation Commission meetings. Um, he does it once a month, or at least more than what, yeah, because we meet once a month, right? So, he'll remind them and he go through the attendance and said, yeah, so far you look good, or you don't, you know, you, you're okay, or you're not okay. Um, and that, that, I think if we have staff, uh, getting the practice of looking at our attendance report that's sent by the city, um, clerk and just kinda remind everybody, like, okay, you're, you're getting close there, or you already have one absence. I think it might be helpful that, to remind the members what's the expectation.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so, so with that added in the warning, I, I'm pretty okay with, with everything else. Councilor Anthony?
Uh, I do wanna discuss D, when we have a chance, and I wanna talk about the one meeting I did miss at Transportation Commission. Um, we don't have a set rule for when somebody's removed for non-attendance reasons. Um, case in point, uh, there was actual fight that broke out at Transportation, and I missed it the one day. Um, I'll tell you later. Um, there's obviously certain behaviors that should not be tolerated. Um, at the time, when that came forward, uh, one member, I believe, resigned immediately, and the other member had to come before council and was removed. I would like to put something in expectation of staff to bring forward, um, anything that may or may not be disruptive enough, and it has to be pretty egregious for us. In addition, if there's a majority vote of each board or commission to remove a member. So, I'd like to give two options to bring forward people who are, um, like I said, very egregious, things that would be wildly disruptive and inexcusable. Um, and I think that would go along with, later, we're gonna talk about a, um,
Conduct.
Conduct, Code of Conduct.
Uh, Councilwoman Mullen?
Yes, actually, um, Councilmember Anthony, this is something, and you could see here all my notes, um, at, in regards to item D and in the Code of Conduct later, um, I completely agree that we have to look at the behavior, um, of some members. There's also, um, intimidation sometimes at the meeting where an individual, um, inject their own opinion, their own thoughts, and take over the meeting where, um, it, I've had members who tell me, I feel I can't speak because I'm intimidated. I feel like if I spoke, that means I'm going, going against this other person because they're very much dom- dominating the conversation in the meeting. And, um, one thing that we have to also remind our members that council set the goals for the city, and they're all available online, and we're gonna have more discussion about him, you know, coming up, and they set policies. So, um, I think this is where it creates intimidation, it creates where certain members speak for their own personal, either gain or, or because they, they, um, have a need to express their opinion about one item or another that they want to happen in the city where it goes completely against council policies that we've set. Um, and I've witnessed it many times during the meetings where, uh, a member or two or three will continue the conversation, and I would be sitting there, and I have a question for the city attorney later in regards to us as liaisons, and sitting in those meetings knowing this is not what council's direction was. And no, they cannot set the policy. They're there to serve as our liaison and come back with a recommendation prior to us setting goals and setting policies. Once we set the policy, I wanna say, uh, they, they need to come to us before we decide to vote whether we're closing San Fernando or not. And I've seen that in a conversation where they're going, having lengthy dialogues about, no, we shouldn't be closing San Fernando, we should, I'm, I'm just using San Fernando as an example, um, that we should do it, reconfigure it in a different way. Well, that's not what council voted for. And having to sit there and listen to that, we need to remind all our members, behavior, conduct, um, in, in following council goals, and then also following, um, uh, adhering to the policies that we approved. If you disagree as an individual, that's absolutely fine, but as a body, and you sit there and having an hour conversation about what we've done that they disagree with, I don't know, that's very productive. And I, I'm gonna wait till the conduct to go over the items that's in the, in the council's expectation, because I do have a concern over, um, individuals who are presenting themselves in public as members of the body be, you know, boards and commissions, and wrong information's being disseminated, wrong information's being set, and it's like all of us here, when we speak in public, you need to identify, I'm speaking personally, right? And we talk about it all the time. This is me as an individual, this is not me representing the council. So, I'm in agreement that we need to put something in place because I don't want other members to feel intimidated, that they can't be open enough in the meetings because somebody's, you know, overpowering the conversation.
Yeah, and I think to that point also, but, and this falls into the training, but training for the chair as well, because I've seen some folks who are chairs, like, step into the role and not really know what it involves. If one of you starts talking over the other, I'm gonna shush you real quick, you know, cause that's my role as a chair. But, but I, I've seen some of our commissioners who maybe th- they, they just kinda fall into it. I will say, I don't know, if you ever had this on library board, it was just like, you become the chair and you run the meeting, but there's no discussion about like what happens in case of that, right? Um, so I think that would be, that would be helpful, like.
Absolutely, and this would come under training and, and staff, um, bringing them back to reality, if you will, and saying, wait a minute, council did vote on this, and this is the policy, and now we have to work around these parameters to make future recommendations, because they already voted on it, and this is what we're doing for the city. Um, and, and so I think some of them, they completely go out of, out of line because they wanna reinvent everything that we already voted for.
Well, you do appoint them based upon their known views, and they do have First Amendment rights to debate the issues in front of them, whether you like them or not. If they cease to represent the, uh, goals and policies of the council, then of course, you can remove them.
But, but it's also good to hear from council that, you know, uh, help staff, um, uh, regulate the meetings and, and help them, uh, deliberate. So, um, so your discussion here is, is helpful.
And, and our role in, as liaisons, I know that was one of the questions for the city attorney, my understanding at least, is that obviously we're not participants, we're not voting, but there are often times where maybe somebody will say like, well, council thinks this, or council thinks that, and they'll look at us and, I think it's very much the commission we serve on, will turn and say, well, as a point of information, this is what council has done, or as a point of information, council has not taken a position on this. You know, you're welcome to discuss it and advise council.
And thank you. When I mentioned that I have a question for the city attorney, I'm actually gonna turn around now and ask you that question. Um, let's say- Let's say the staff or the members did not call on council to speak, and I'm listening to this conversation, you're in the room and listening to all this. Are we allowed as liaisons that if I hear something that is not what council's decision was, or what action we're taking, can we raise our hand and ask to speak and clarify that information?
So, the chair of every board has the burden of running that meeting. And if they would like liaisons there, that I would expect that they would. But, but because you're not a member, you also can't interrupt. So it might be worth adding that to your own procedures, which don't expressly apply to the boards and commissions. Council has adopted procedures for running its meetings, and those do not expressly apply, the minute limitations, all of that, don't apply. But you could, you could create some, some type of rule, but keep in mind, the code does expressly say the liaison is there for liaison purposes only, which is really just a representative, either to bring sentiment back, I know at times, there have been commissioners that felt the, the full sentiment of the commission was not conveyed by staff to the council, right? And so that's one of the things that comes forward. And then the other thing, of course, is if you're at a board, and you feel that the position of the council's being misrepresented, or they say it's vague and it's not, there should be a procedure, but the council member as the liaison should not be interrupting the decorum, they're not the chair. So that's something that perhaps is worth addressing, so that the liaison have an expectation.
I'll go to Vice Mayor and then Counselor.
Thank you for that clarification. For me, I think the main issue for a council member being there is just make sure that we don't influence their discussion. And sometimes piping in on a clarification point, which we've done a few times at Sustainability, they may be even asking, what was it that, that, because sometimes we might kick it back to the commission to look at an item or something. What did council wanna do? And so we clarify, but we have to be really careful to do it in a way that is information only and no, like, influence, because while it's true that we, as a council, do make decisions and we have policies, there's also folks on these boards, these are our advisory folks, so if they have some thoughts or information that will help us do a better job next time, personally, I feel like it's good to hear some additional thoughts as well. So I, as my liaison's positions and what I've seen in the past, I do appreciate when the council member's not influencing or implying that anyone should talk about things a certain way. But to your point, though, if the, if the commission is so off in left field that they're not using the time wisely, I think that's definitely something to consider, you know, talking, I would probably talk to staff later, or talk to the attorney and just see if that's something that's like the direction that we want the committee to go. But overall, like, our influence, I like to see where they're gonna kind of go on their own.
To one, one good example of this, for example, when the Sustainability Commission was going on a debate about whether or not to ask council to agendize leaf blowers, it was very pertinent information to let them know that we had already agendized that, right, to not lead them down that rabbit hole. And then we have been asked questions in the past as well, where it's like, well, what do you both think about this? And we'll say, well, we're not gonna opine on, on this subject. We can tell you what council has done or hasn't, and we're here for information, not for our opinions.
Sorry. And I agree, and I've attended so many of them, and believe me, I'm sitting there biting my tongue so many, for long hours, just to allow that discussion to take place. But I think at some point, the discussion, again, takes place where, I'm gonna use the BRT as an example, which is a controversial issue. There is some people who want it, some people don't want it, and so there's always a discussion about it. And I can't tell you, it's like, okay, council's already taken an action on this and voted, and this is what we are. So let's stop discussing how we redo this whole thing for BRT. I'm, again, using examples because I serve on transportation. The senior board, God bless them, they just go on and, you know, give information. But sometime they need information, or, you know, staff may not be aware that council the night before actually adopted something that's important, that it pertains to them. And so I think those are the moment where we ask, you know, staff or the chair for permission to give an update. And it's good to have this dialogue because each one of us do it different, right? I typically sit there, I let staff do it, sometime I, you know, talk to, if Marissa's sitting next to me, and I'm like, no, 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 we did that. But I think it should be, for all of us, understanding that we can do this. And I think the city manager wants to jump in, so I'm gonna let you do that.
Mr. City Manager.
Counselor Member, we do have, in your handbook, we do have the City Council Liaison Definition of Role and Purpose Policy. So that is in there, if you'd like.
Could you read it real quick? Is that okay? It's not lengthy, is it?
That's a little lengthy.
It's a one pager, how about that? So it says, council liaison, so council liaison is a member, council member who is specifically assigned to be the liaison between the commission and the city council. The primary role of the liaison is that of facilitator of communications from the commission to the council. A council member who is appointed to sit as a member of a board, commission, or committee is not a liaison for purposes of this definition, definition of the role. The council liaison shall facilitate communications between the commission and the council. The liaison should not be an advocate for the commission, give direction, or influence a decision of the commission. The liaison, the liaison may, however, assist and provide information. Purpose, the liaison acts as a spokesperson on behalf of the council when so directed by the council when seated as a body. They contact person if the commission or an individual commissioner wants such a channel of communication. And three, monitor the commission to identify procedural and/or structural issues relating to the effective functioning of the commission for council. And then it talks about, last paragraph is participation expectation. Attendance is discretionary with the council member, although attendance at commission meetings is not required. It is encouraged, liaisons shall have no vote on the commission and shall not act as an ex officio member of the commission.
If I could offer, just in that last phrase, I would simply say, liaisons may participate in discussions and deliberations at the discretion of the chair. I think that would be.
That's different.
You're not a member, expressly in the ordinance, you're not a member.
But I'm saying if the, if, if the chair is asking for information in the, the, like,
Counselor.
Counselor Moons' point, it's like, how do you, how?
For the sake of time, it was pretty clear on information delivering, while participating in discussion and deliberation gets into a different topic.
Well, so here's, here's my only, here's my thought. Yes, we should be giving that information, but there's no clear guidelines on when. And so I think just putting, maybe even in the second paragraph, opening with, at the discretion of the chair,
I think that gets to a different side of the subject, to Counselor Moons' point, because I hear you're coming from, but that is something that I think that the chairs don't know. We're lucky that they turned to us and look at us like, so, what's going on? Versus maybe other commissions might just keep on talking, and they're like, well, you're just here to hear. I think it's worth putting that information to the chair and to the commission, saying, this is what your liaison is here for. If you have a question on information, you can ask. If you want an opinion, you cannot ask, right? Which I think would help all of us as well, stay out of maybe those sticky situations too. And, and you know, I think we've had this as well, or maybe a commission will ask, like, well, we want to do this, but council has done otherwise, and I can think of some instances I won't mention directly. But, you know, they've asked us, well, can we, can we oppose? And our job is just to say, well, you are able to give your opinion to the council as a body. If you disagree with something you've done, if you agree with something we've done, you can discuss it, vote on it, and give us your opinion. And we have had instances where, as a commission, they disagree with things that we've done. But I think the most, more important part than whether or not they agree is that they discuss it in the proper manner, right? And it's not, to Counselor Moons' point, one member taking over. It's a discussion of that body that turns out either a signed letter or a member coming to speak. It is done on a vote basis, not a, well, I feel like this subject, and I'm gonna take over the meeting from the chair.
I, I think that is spot on exactly what I was trying to get to. I think you're right. So, so instead of putting it there, we have the attachment three, the City Council Expectations of Board or Commission, which we'll get to later. Only in the second part does it talk about the chair, and that's usually for the other members. I think we should include a line about chairs' responsibilities and how people chair meetings. I think that was where it would fall in. Yeah, and we'll get to that later.
And I'm gonna lean a little bit on staff. The direct staff who's running the meetings, they really need to make the chair aware, or maybe spend some time with the chair, or direct the, the conversation. And maybe if the chair doesn't know, staff can jump in and say, by the way, if you have any questions or you need clarification, and then ask, like, what you guys have in sustainable commission. You know, you can go ahead and ask the council member.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney.
It is, it is the commission's commission meeting, it's not staff's commission meeting. And the chair of that body runs the meeting. So it's, it's, I know we have many very qualified staff, and some of the staff have staffed the bodies longer than many of the commissioners have been on them. But it is still the chairperson's meeting, and so I just say that in terms of expectation. There are some limits to how staff can influence the body that you all appointed in, in terms of conduct or, or, you know, steering them. Thankfully, they've been good, but I would, you know, it's, it's, staff can be there to support, but it's, it's difficult to expect that they would steer the meeting necessarily.
Mr. City Manager.
I, I think we probably could do a better job when a new chair comes on board as providing the guidance and training of kind of, okay, this is what to expect, and here are some of the things, not necessarily.
Because none of that, none of that's in here.
Yeah, not necessarily manipulating the meeting or focusing on an individual meeting. It's more of, as chair here, this is kind of how it's different than sitting as.
Quite frankly, the information I received when I became mayor, right? This is your duties as a chair, and I think that that'll be, that'll help a lot with some of the issues.
And I think the city manager, I appreciate you jumping in saying that. Mr. City Attorney, okay, I give you, it's, it's a commission responsibility, however, as many years, as I've said, with boards, commissions, and committees, there were a lot of concerns and issues about, I don't know what my role is. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I don't know how to run the meetings, and who do I turn to? And not, I can't put all the staff in one category. There's some, like you said, they've been doing an exceptional job because they know what to do, but there's some new staff members that haven't had that opportunity to know what to do with, when the new chair comes on board. But in August, we appoint new members, and then there's a new chair every August. And I think it's important that staff spends some time with that chair, walking them through the process and giving them the 101, how to handle the meetings, how to get everybody together.
I am more than happy, as I know all of the attorneys in my office are more than happy to assist. I've given quite a few Brown Act warnings, generally mine are listened to. I've had a few board members quit the day after, and I've seen some of the staff be talked right over. And, you know, they, they'll do their best, but, you know, it depends on the, the tone of the discussion and how vigorously someone wants to talk. For some of the boards, they meet once a month, and sometimes they're frustrated by something that happened last week that couldn't be agendized. And so, anyway, we're more than happy to do training. As you know, the clerk's office and city attorney's office have recorded many trainings. I don't know if they've got more than 12 views in the last eight years, but they're there, and we're always available to help.
I've watched them, they're nice, they're great, lots of illustrations. I, I just think to follow up on Counselor Moons' point really quickly, I think it'd be really good to have, even if it's, it doesn't take more than 30 minutes to really share with the chair, these are your roles and responsibilities, and making sure that all our chairs across the board have that for the year, because there's a variety of chairs, right? Like, some folks are like, thanks, I got the gavel, now I'm ready to go, and other folks are like, what do I do? So I, I think just those, that little pocket is helpful. Counselor Anthony?
To that point, when we get to it, I would like to see a section of expectations just for the chair of the meeting.
I would agree.
Yeah, that way it's easier for staff to go through it.
Okay, but coming back.
Coming back to, yes, D, what was it, D? So D. Here's, I have a, I have a legal Brown Act question. If somebody, say there's a meeting going on and something wildly inappropriate happens, obviously, it's the chair's responsibility, which we'll get to, to get the meeting back under control. But at that point, is it, is it within the Brown Act to take, to, to make a motion at that point to remove a member or recommend removing a member, or does that have to be agendized? If it's something that egregious?
A member of the body?
Yeah, a member of the body, to recommend to city council in that meeting on the day that it happens. I mean, I'm talking something egregious enough.
No, well, the council wouldn't be there.
No, 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 I'm saying, they would make a motion and send that, send that up the chain to us. Like, can they, is that?
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be appropriate. The chair should write correspondence to the council and raise their concerns. City councils have acted swiftly when necessary, and I've seen board members removed in less than two weeks when they violated the Political Reform Act, or council perceived that they created the appearance of conflict and compromised the, the.
Do we have, do we give, are we, do we empower each of the members to be able to run that up in case it's the chair or vice chair that does that? I mean.
You're all familiar with our rampant email communications that go through the community liaison. I, I don't think there's any shortage, we've, I've seen complaints before where people just felt like they didn't like a board member, and they felt there was conflict. I think people are free, they feel free to share how they feel, and then it would be for the council to determine whether, you know, one of the expectations was violated or whether they just don't continue to serve the council's goals and purpose.
I'll go Vice Mayor Takahashi and then Counselor Moons.
And to that point, am I correct in remembering that our committee members, commission members, serve at the pleasure of the council? So there's literally, we literally can just say, meh, you're done. We don't have to have a reason technically, I mean, obviously, we would because we're an awesome council, so we would give that reason. We wouldn't just do that, but we could technically do that, legally do that, right?
Yes, and every time I've seen it, in the 20 years I've been here, there has been a reason, and in one case, they clearly removed somebody, and in another case, that after much deliberation, they decided to leave another person at their post.
Right. So the points about, like, reasons to be able to dismiss somebody, I think, we don't, I personally don't think we need to delineate reasons why, we could just leave it that, that we have that, always have that discretion.
I think the code of conduct later will take care of it.
Agreed, so.
Also, what if we don't receive notification from the chair and something does, significant does happen? The staff can also go through the city manager or to the department head, the city attorney's office, to bring that matter to your attention, or the department has attention, the city manager, and then you notify us that there's been an issue, and we're gonna bring a matter to city council for their consideration.
Depending upon the matter, if it's a personnel harassment issue, it would probably come up through the city manager's office or maybe my office. If it was a gross, what I believe to be a knowing violation or persistent violation of the Brown Act, I would bring it up with the city council, and then you would agendize it. So depending upon the nature of the conduct, you know, for at least half of our boards, they're recorded, televised, so council would have the ability and would probably know before we could actually, you know, provide correspondence to you.
Okay, thank you.
Coming back, we've discussed this thoroughly, are we good with the recommendation? What you originally made yours? Okay, great.
I am absolutely good.
So we have our new process for how folks are removed, that's much clearer, great. Okay, the last thing is other council considerations.
We skipped over, we skipped over one small thing.
Oh, yeah, the training.
Oh, trainings.
Under the, the code, the city attorney's office suggested that we consider adding other reasons for removal. So the poor behavior, you've already addressed, failure to attend training sessions. Failure to attend training sessions mandated by the city is one. And, um, uh, repeated absences, we've already talked about. So the other one that we just need to talk about is failure to attend training sessions mandated by the city.
What would those training sessions include?
Sometimes it's AB 1234 Ethics Training. There's, there's a variety.
Right, and, and those trainings are mandatory. I mean, that's a state law, so.
They are.
Yeah.
And we give them 30 days to complete all that, right?
We work with the member as much as possible. It's not a, a problem that comes up commonly, but there's been times where we've had to chase.
Is another, another one. Brown Act training is usually conducted by the city attorney. It could be on video or it could be in person and some of them don't attend. If it's just everybody showing up.
So we have a recorded one that's still on the city's YouTube channel.
With 12 views.
Well, it might have more. I know three of them were mine. I keep checking every once in a while. And then, um, we are scheduled to do Brown Act training to all boards and commissions this first quarter. Uh, well, not scheduled, but we're planning on doing a Brown Act and conflicts update. Um, and we did it two years ago, so. There's two different ways for them to have that.
Really, that's pretty straightforward and are we fine with that?
Yes, I think they, they should be, we should be getting a notice whoever is not attending.
Hundred percent.
Okay, so, so basically if they're not, if they've missed the Brown Act meeting, they have to watch the video, is what we're saying.
I don't know that we've made it compulsory attendance. Usually we have, uh, full attendance at the boards when we go to them. Uh, when they take it, when they are supposed to watch the recorded, it's just on YouTube. So I'm not sure that they fill anything out.
No, you could add a requirement. I mean, we could follow up with, I mean, it would have to be, the onus would be on staff to follow up with the members, like a clipboard. You have to take this training. It's your, it's your preference.
Councilwoman Moens?
Thank you. I, I want to see if it's possible that we, um, have staff, just like we get our code of conduct, hand it to us as a reminder that boards and commissions and committees be given a copy of the expectation at.
And then sign it?
Meeting and I, I do, well, there's a print and sign in the back. I think we need to remind all of them of what the code's an expectation, just like we get it once a year. I hope that as a reminder that we visit that because, again, it addresses a lot of the violation. And number one is their personal agenda and all the things that we talked about. So I think it's important that we revisit this and remind them.
Yeah, they could very much be mandated to sign it. Okay, so we're all in agreement there? Don't miss trainings. You will be removed.
And signing the code of conduct once it's, and we'll do all that within 30 days? Are we okay with that number?
Sure.
My, my only concern is.
This is coming back where we can rehash like the, the minute details, so.
Okay. So you're, you're suggesting 30 days after they are appointed or, because there's some, like, say it's Community Development Block Grant, that group, they only meet a couple times, so are you wanting us to have staff follow up with them 30 days after they're appointed?
Given that we just had this conversation, I think at the beginning of the year, so January, since we're discussing this, February, so I think it's important that we start from the beginning of the year and just hand it out to them.
No, she's saying from the individual, when they get on, cause most people join in in like July.
In, in, in August, on August 1st, when they're appointed, they attend their first meeting. Then, then it gets handed to them for signature.
Okay.
For the new members.
Okay, so within 30 days of their first meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Sure.
Gives a bigger window.
And, and to the vice mayor's point, this is all coming back to us to review an ordinance form. Okay, let's talk about other council considerations.
And if, if I could, I just wanna get clarification before we move on to the last list. On the third absence, if a member voluntarily resigns, you're not asking for a report to council? If, if he volunteer, if he or she voluntarily resigns?
Yes.
Now, if they wish to plead their case, what was the decision there? They should contact you individually or a staff report gets generated?
Not that they should, you should give them a list of things they can do. They can email us, they can call, they can come here and plead their case.
But they still have to provide a, a report. The city clerk will still have to provide a report.
That's my question.
Yes, that, that, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. The other council considerations. So the first one is implementing term limits for members. How do we feel about that?
I, I'm personally not in favor of it. Usually cities that do that, they have term limits for council as well, so kinda coincides with council. But I think having members serve for many years bring a lot of wealth of information, history. And actually, we do have term limits because we don't have to reappoint them when it comes back to us and we feel, hey, they've been serving for 20 some years, we could just remove them. Or we're not appointing them, basically.
I, I'd be in favor of term limits just as consecutive terms. So they would have to step down at one point that they can get, be reappointed later. Like for me, if it's a term, it would just be consecutive. That way you can cycle through and different people get on. And then two years later, you're like, eh, that person was actually pretty good, let's put him back on.
Clarifying question just for where you're at, what, how many term limits?
I would say three. Twelve years is fine.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, so three consecutive terms.
That would, that would have made you pass.
I was, I was done after my 12 years.
But we do have the power not to reappoint them.
Until I re-up for here.
And then to, for clarification, you're meaning on the same board? Like if somebody were moved to another board, it would start over at the clock?
If you move over to another, it starts another clock. And here, here's the caveat I would give. It would be three consecutive whole terms. No partial terms should count towards that.
And that would start, um, moving forward, once we adopt, um, the language that would be coming back to us, 12 years from that point on?
Yeah, starting this July, yeah, it would be, yeah.
Well, you all, you all know, I've been a proponent of term limits forever. So I even want term limits for us, but that's a whole other conversation. Uh, yeah, I, I agree, 12 years is a solid amount of time. We have a resident expert letting us know that that was, that was about his, his limit there. And, and I think it's good, like it encourages other folks to apply and then serve their time as well. Um, okay, so 12 years.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that. Are you saying that, you mentioned July and is that when you, only at the Ju?
So 12 consecutive, sorry, three consecutive whole terms? On the same committees, which means none of, no partial terms count and we only appoint whole terms in July?
And you mentioned when it would go into effect. So my question is, it would go into effect after we bring back the ordinance and council approvals?
Yes, 12 years from that point on.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not gonna come back bef, after July, you think, right?
No, but it, but I wasn't clear on what the July was coming in, sorry. Oh, yeah, what about grandfathering in people who already, like, um, Mr. Rizotti? If he were to have three terms?
Yeah, no, it would start, it would start now, so.
Right.
Nothing, nothing previous. If you've served for 20 years, you can get another 12.
Thank you.
So when he goes back to planning commission, he can do three more terms.
Yeah, so clock starts again.
After your full career on council, when you go back to the planning commission.
This will cut down on the cost of the pins that we give out.
Alrighty, um, the next one, eliminating the requirement for members to be registered electors of the city. So allowing residents of, well.
Right.
Allowing residents. This, I believe the, the city clerk mentioned is, uh, in accordance with, I forgot, the SB 225.
SB 225, it passed in 2019. We recently had a woman come forward and she was not a citizen, so we could not accept her application.
And we would verify residency though, like, uh, for, with the city of, within the city of Burbank.
Right, residency is a separate issue, but this is more like, and in order to be an elector of the city, you must be a, a citizen of the United States, right? So a woman came forward who is a resident of Burbank, but is not a registered voter in Burbank. And we had to turn her application down. So Senate Bill 225, which passed in 2019, says that you, you are permitted to serve on a board or commission without being an elector of the city. So we're just throwing it out there, if you wanted to get current with.
I would agree.
State law.
Well, I, I'm comfortable with that, but that begs the question of, I know we technically have a requirement for most of these to be a resident of the city, but I know there's a handful of people who've served over the years that live just outside the city or have lived here for a long time and then moved out or work full-time. I, I honestly don't know why that should be a hard and fast requirement because people are gonna put down their address anyways. And for me, if I'm reading an application and someone lives in Burbank, I'm gonna give them preferential treatment. But at a certain point, if I get a resume from somebody who's not in the city, to me, the requirement for being a resident, I think, is also a little outdated.
We're, we're not considering that right now, that we're looking at, at specifically like citizen versus non-citizen.
Right, so it's just a small passage if, if I can read it out loud. So it's under Burbank Municipal Code 2-1-407 Residency. Except as may be otherwise provided in this code or by council resolution, no person shall be eligible to be a member of any board, commission or committee unless they are an elector of and actually live in the city. This includes all appointments to outside agency boards, such as the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Airport Authority. So it's talking just about whether or not they are a US citizen and, and, and registered to vote. It's really if they're registered to vote.
Yeah, how do we feel about this?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, I personally, um, prefer that they're a voter because they're more engaged in what's going on in the city and they understand who's on council. I mean, it doesn't mean that they're not gonna be engaged, but I think it, it gives a little bit more of involvement in the process of the city and who's on council and who's, you know. But I understand the laws have changed and, I mean, if the law says you have to, um, accept them to serve, then it's fine. There is a reason why there losses you have to be a voter.
Well, we're still allowed to make the requirement. This just gives us the opportunity to not make the requirement.
We would just be amending the Burbank Municipal Code.
I'm, I'm saying have to. Does the state law say we now can't use citizenship as a basis? Right, I'm saying, does the state law say you cannot use the term electorate?
We have a copy of the actual Senate bill. We're just pulling it up now. It's, it's written just like a Senate bill, so it's two or three pages in small print, so.
Whereas, whereas, whereas.
It would take us a moment to find that.
I would suggest looking towards the top. SB 225.
225.
And, and I would just say, while, while staff looks that up, I will say, I, I, I do wanna, I actually disagree with you on this point just because, because I think, um, I, again, personally, as somebody who's had a lot of family, friends who are undocumented or otherwise, trust me, sometimes there are folks who are paying attention the most to what's happening in a city, to what's happening in their government and who would appreciate the opportunity even more to be involved. So I, I'm thinking of those folks, you know, maybe, maybe you're a resident and you're waiting, you're, you're five years to be a citizen. I think that should definitely be allowed. Think the conversation of whether you live in Burbank is a whole other ballgame? We may not disagree on that one, or we may not agree on that one. But I think if you live in Burbank, you should have the opportunity to serve your city. Whether or not you're registered to vote, I mean, if you're eligible to register to vote, you should register to vote. But if you're ineligible.
Encouragement to have folks vote and participate.
But in many cases, they can't. So this just allows those who cannot to be involved in our city process and, and have some say in, in how our local, local government is shaped.
Madam Mayor, if I may, do we, right now, do we check if people are registered voters when you, when they apply?
Yes.
You do? Okay. So all of our commissioners right now are registered voters? And how, how often have you told someone, I'm sorry, you can't apply because you're not a registered voter of the city?
In my tenure, it's only happened the one time and that was fairly recently.
Interesting, okay. Then I, for me, I could six in one hand, half dozen in the other. I mean, I really, it doesn't have much of an effect. But at that same time, if there is somebody who is very involved, but for whatever reason is not registered, there's, there's more reasons than being, uh, not, being undocumented to not register that they still have the opportunity. And it simplifies too for staff, that one less step that they have to take for each person who applies. So I think it's fine to consider to add for the next round.
Councilwoman Anthony?
I would just give one example. I have a friend who's on a green card and has been here 20 years, uh, who would love to apply and ask me early on, hey, can I get on this? I said, uh, you, sorry, you gotta be registered to vote. He's like, okay. So he never even applied. So we may open the door to more people who are very active and involved in the city.
Or to that point, somebody who's like on a visa, who's here on a work visa or a marriage visa or something like that too. So there's, there's lots of reasons why somebody might not be registered.
I just thought of a, a situation that happened and, and it might open the door. Maybe we need to consider that. Of course, we always encourage our youth to apply and get engaged and involved. And if they are not required to be a registered voter, cause right now you have to be 18 to vote. So if we're not gonna, if we're gonna remove that requirement, I've had, um, a young student who was not 18 and insisted to serve on a complicated board that we, you know, the answer was, I'm sorry, because you're not a registered voter, you're not 18 yet and you're required to be 18 and blah, blah, blah. Cause that, and again, I want the youth to be involved, but when you have somebody applying for BWP or applying for planning or applying for those complicated that you need the background and experience, we need to take that in consideration. Cause I remember he, it, it hit him really hard that he was like, no, I can do this, I can serve. So we need to be aware of this, that it may happen.
I'm, I'm personally, again, I'm a little biased, being the youngest person up here and the youngest mayor ever serving here. I, I'm not opposed to folks applying and then being beat out to, you know, somebody who maybe they're not ready. Maybe it's a learning experience for them. But that being said, it, we could impose an age requirement at that point if, if council is interested in that.
Have we gotten the language of this bill yet or?
It's fairly complex. I'll read just one paragraph that I think is salient. This bill would instead provide that a person is eligible to hold an elective civil office if at the time of election, the person is 18 years of age and a citizen of the state. A citizen of the state, it's complex.
But that's elective office.
Right. The bill would also provide that a person, regardless of citizenship or immigration status, is eligible to hold an appointed civil office if the person is 18 years of age and a resident of the state.
The city or state.
Okay.
The bill would provide that a person appointed to civil office, regardless of citizenship or immigration status, may receive any form of compensation that the person is not otherwise prohibited from receiving pursuant to federal law, including but not limited to any stipend grant or reimbursement of personal expenses.
Supersedes us, so.
And, and let, let's not reinvent the wheel. We can say, right, like, if you are 18 years older, we don't have to check voter status. But to your point, right, 18 years old or older, we already have that in there.
But, but, but it sounds like it's super, it's like we can't even have the requirement. So we have to adopt it. It says they're eligible regardless of what we say.
At this point, I wouldn't be willing to say it's prescriptive. I would need a little bit more time.
Okay.
We just ask staff to take a look at that for the second step?
Yeah, 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 bring that back and see if, cause if it's prescriptive, then it's not even us, up to us anymore.
And where, well, where's the council right now? What is the council's pleasure in this?
I'm okay with it anyways.
So let's, let's not even reinvent the wheel.
As long as we're putting 18 years of age.
Any resident of the city 18 years or, regardless of citizenship status. Great, or voting registration. Okay, great. Next one, requiring members of the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission and Sustainable Burbank Commission to be Burbank residents.
Yes.
So we're, alright, that's fine. I'm not gonna fight you on it.
So I'm, yes, so long as we have an opportunity.
He said, what if they live in the Cabrini apartments, opening another can of worms?
Okay. We did talk about on the, of cultural arts, about having folks from, uh, planning and from, uh, park and rec. Um, I do think it is valuable to have folks in the arts, um, community who's outside of the city. Who's in the Los Angeles County. I'm trying to be serious here, talking about serious things. Talk about, uh, in Los Angeles County, who understand like the bigger picture. So I think there's definitely a value there. So, um, is Marissa still here? Uh, Ms. Garcia still here? Yeah, so when we're, um, considering. Ms. Garcia is still here? Yeah. So when we're considering the cultural arts, is there a way that we can also just think about how we can potentially include the businesses? If we don't, if we decide not to have a business or or two spot, that how can we make sure that there isn't representative and and input from the the arts, business arts community?
Good evening again. Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation. Yes, there there's multiple ways that we could ensure that there's the voice of our business community that may not be Burbank residents. Whether it's engaging them in discussion and conversation, bringing subject matter experts, multiple ways that we could ensure that their voices are heard. Similar to, you know, as a previous conversation about planning or whatnot, there there are ways that we can incorporate that in as we do an analysis and and look at how others other communities have have done that. But yes.
I'm comfortable comfortable with it, so long as we do have a way for the business community to be involved.
I agree, and it's going to come back to us anyway, so.
Great. Any other? No? All right. Removing non-voting liaisons from the Sustainable Burbank Commission.
I I I don't, you guys serve on there. Do you need non-voting? I mean, do they attend the meetings? I think it's just forcing people to sign up for another commission. Then then I think we should do it.
And then those liaisons are not from other commissions necessarily.
They're from like the school district, the chamber, that we don't need, we don't need to have them.
And again, to my earlier point, anybody, they're public meetings, you can invite anybody.
The letter if they need, if they have recommendations.
And staff can always reach out to the folks who are involved in whatever area that they need to have a connection with and invite them to be a participant in that particular meeting.
Exactly. Okay, so I'm I'm okay with that. If you all are okay with that, great. Okay, addressing whether individuals serving on one commission can apply to serve on another without resigning from their current position. Alternatively, council may wish to require serving members to complete their term before applying for a different one. Who would like to go first?
They should finish their term. If they're gonna take up a seat and then plan to jump, it's not fair. I think that they should finish their term.
I I I'm in agreement. One of the, one of the things we often see, we'll see somebody drop, right, for one reason or another, they move, they can't do it, and then somebody from another commission will apply for that seat. And we like them, so we appoint them. And now we've got to appoint somebody new to fill their seat. It's like this, what do you call musical chairs, chess game, Donald effect, all of it. So we should allow folks to switch at the normal time where it's, you know, the July big appointment day.
So would you say, well, this is gonna happen anyways, right? Like, like, serving their term. Let's say you're in your first, or you finish your first term, but now you're first, like, year of your second term in, and somebody jumps off a commission you want. Would you allow them then?
So I would only give the exemption during the the annual reassignment. So if it's a mid-year midterm assignment, right, you're not allowed.
Oh, yeah.
Unless you want to resign. If you resign, hey, take your chances.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
But it would be strongly discouraged. And so you can do the jump if it's during the big reassignment.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Councilor Mullins.
So here's the other side, and I I get that, but here's another side from, again, speaking from experience and what I heard from members. Some want to serve on on boards and commissions. I, of course, you always want to encourage them to serve on something they're going to be interested in, they have passion for, and you go through all that. But if they applied, like, I think of Terry. He applies on certain ones where he can't get on there. What if he applies on one committee and he finds that he doesn't like it, he wants to apply for another one, and he.
He can resign.
So you're saying resign and then apply for a different one?
And what that does.
It's the same effect.
It does have the same effect, but it doesn't have the same timing. What we end up doing is having a bunch of, you know, consecutive meetings over the course of a month or two, where we're appointing somebody to fill a seat and appointing somebody to fill a seat. If you want to apply, you resign, and that gives the city clerk enough time to come back. Now we're doing all the appointments all at the same time.
So what you're saying is if somebody resigns, like, like, regardless of whether they want to go somewhere else, somebody resigns, somebody moves, somebody something somewhere in the middle of their term, nobody that is currently on a different commission can apply for that. It's all gonna be like a new.
They can if they resign their post.
But you're gonna have a whole bunch of resignations and vacancies, but that's a lot more work.
Vacancies, though. Let me let me give you a scenario.
Yeah.
There's, okay, you really want a spot on I O B. And that opens up, and somebody from Sustainability, Library, and Parks and Rec want that spot on I O B. And all three of them resign, and they apply to that. Now we have to fill three vacancies.
Yeah.
Right, but we're gonna be filling that vacancy all in one fell swoop. We're gonna get all the same applications at the same time, and timing wise, it's gonna be at the same time that I O B opens up.
I see our city attorney shaking his head. Is that about timing?
So the current city clerk and former city clerk can answer this better than me, but they would resign once the vacancies, once one vacancy is being advertised. And those three vacancies would trail. So it wouldn't be all at one time. So then you'd still have a successive meeting with three vacancies. And potentially, they'd be applying to get back into the seats that they vacated.
Yeah. I I think, I think.
Well, no, because it's, it doesn't happen that quick.
But but here's, think about this. During our annual appointments, where we make, you know, we appoint a a large group of, you know, our boards and commissions, we typically get the report that says first choice, second choice, they currently serve on this committee or not committee, a commission. I think maybe it's up to then us council to, when we're making that appointment, to take that in consideration that, hey, when were they appointed to this committee? If they were appointed six months ago, a year ago, you know, we need to evaluate that when we're making the appointment, so we're not we're not jumping them ourselves, so we're not voting for them to move from one and go to the other. There is, I I think it's important, and we've done it in the last appointment. I know there was a lot of individuals who wanted to jump between one or the other, and we did not. We appointed actually new members to the boards and commissions. It it, to do it the way you were describing it, it really gonna create a chain effect of resignations and unnecessary resignation. I mean, we don't want them to resign.
So maybe, okay, so maybe it's just up to us.
To look at what they're serving on. When were they appointed? If somebody's been there for eight years and they're applying, all of a sudden, they decide, you know what, I I'm tired of planning after eight years, I want to go to parks. That is something we need to consider, saying, okay, they've been there eight years and they've been a good, good person serving, so maybe we put them in parks. But if somebody just got appointed for six months, a year, two years.
Personally, I would prefer to keep somebody where they are, because they, that's what they said they were gonna do.
Can't really force them if they choose to leave.
So you're saying we can't, like, put it in the rules?
So I'll let, like, Vice Mayor Takahashi has a thing to say, but I have a proposal for all of you, because I I think piecemeal is a little bit of what we're saying here, but go ahead.
Yeah, I I agree with Councilmember Mullins, and I think that the main concern in this situation is to try to avoid there being cascading vacancies. But unfortunately, that will not be solved by this. Now, if the main intent is to try to dissuade people from applying and try to encourage people who are not already serving to apply, new people, I can see a little bit of an argument for that at the cost of having staff possibly do more work and having to decide more people coming through. But I think that, for the most part, that how it works now is fine, and that council has the ability to discern who can, who is, what their reasons are. And I also, I'm a little bit concerned, too, that if we do dissuade people from applying because they know they have to resign, that there may be times when we don't have enough people to apply. So I just want to make sure we're not, we're not saying, well, this this very small group of people, you're not allowed to apply for these positions. Everyone else in the city can apply for these positions, but not these, like, you know, thirty people or whatever, yeah.
So the only thing I would propose, because I heard Councilwoman Rosati bring it up, i- if you're brand new, like, and you're filling a short-term vacancy, right, you're filling the end of somebody's term, I do think you should finish out your term. If you are signing up for a six-month term, finish it out, don't jump to something new. And and we can mandate it for for those folks, right? If, you know, individuals that apply to complete a term cannot apply to a different board and commission, they must finish their partial term.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I think that's great.
Great. We're all good with that?
City clerk, did you get that?
We're all good with that?
Yes.
All right. All right, we are reaching the end. Establishing guidelines for the conduct of board and commission members meeting similar to the guidelines recently established for city council meetings. We may also wish to ask them to establish annual or biannual goals and report out on progress. Now, I think we've talked about that a lot. I I would, I would guess that this council is in favor of establishing the same guidelines that we have on our boards and commissions. Great. Councilwoman Rosati.
And I think, I just want to bring up maybe a little stricter. I just think that if you're serving at the pleasure of the council, you should be held to a higher standard if you're on a board and commission, and I think that there should be for conduct, you know, you should be able to be removed if you're bullying somebody or disrespectful, whether it's in this chamber or on social media. I think that, you know, you should be held to a higher standard, and I've seen people that are on boards that are on social media embarrassing, you know, to me, they represent our city, and yet they conduct themselves in in a very disrespectful way. So I think that there should be something in place that if they're a toxic person, then they should be considered for removal.
In the conduct of the city business, like, I don't want to get into their personal affairs, but I I think I think that, to an extent, I think you're right.
And I would argue that our code of conduct, since we heard it so recently, our code of conduct does cover that, because it mentions social media as well. And I think the primary thing, and to anybody listening, like, board and commission members, you you fall under the same thing we do. If you're out there saying this and this about transportation and blah, 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 you better say, I'm not speaking my capacity as a commissioner. You know, the same way, if if we say anything, you're never speaking our capacity as as an elected official, as a council member. It's in our personal capacity if we're sharing personal opinions. I I would say that our code is pretty, pretty good, but but to the point, it has never been adhered to them. They have never had something like, like our code of conduct.
And I, part of the discussion earlier, and it's written here in the expectation, also spreading, you know, slander, spreading false information about council members, staff, or other boards and commission members. It happens. And, you know, it's as a, as an, as an individual who's appointed by council, and you're gonna speak in a public setting or social media or whatever the case is, and especially if you're targeting any of us or targeting other members, boards and commission members, or targeting staff members, and we've seen it, we've had emails where they're calling staff names and they're being very critical on social media. I think we need to bring those back in and say, you can't serve on on a board representing us because it's not acceptable. And this really also demonstrate, you know, hate speeches and and everything that we don't stand for.
The the one thing I would say, and and thank you for pointing out that 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 language is is in there, the one thing I would say is, I I think, again, with the, and sorry, this more work for staff, where we're saying they sign the code of conduct, they should have to read that at the beginning and sign and agree to to all of these things. Because I I don't think right now they are presented it in a way that we are, with our handbook, with our guidelines, that that's not something that happens.
They come in and do the oath of office in in your office, right?
They take the oath of office at my office. The, everything after that, they get onboarded if they need to through management services. And then the liaison is the one who gives them a packet of information, and that's something we probably should work with the liaisons to make sure that's standardized, because I think one of you had suggested to me that some members aren't that familiar with the Brown Act, so I asked my staff, when do they get that booklet? And we don't provide that booklet for them. I'm happy to do it if if that's your your preference, but it is handed out by the liaison during their first meeting, presumably, but I have no way to track that.
I would, to ensure that it's done, and it's done at the same time, and and I think it adds a little bit of seriousness to it all. If at the same time you're being sworn in, you're also being given the code of conduct and the Brown Act booklet, I I would, if you're amenable to it, Madam City Clerk, I would.
Happy to do so. I think it's a good idea.
And we used to, prior to, we conducted training for liaisons and for the staff to to explain to them what the the do's and don'ts and how to onboard new members. But we've had so many changes with staff and promotions, and somebody's not doing the the job anymore, so that kind of got lost, and that's why we handed over to them the Brown Act book. We handed a lot of the documents that they're supposed to sign over to the staff, so they can have that dialogue and conversation with the members. But things have changed a lot since then, so I I agree, should be given all to the city clerk.
We could also provide them with the code of conduct and ask them to read, and it's, they could read it there, actually, and and sign it and return it to our office. That's another option.
That would be great.
Yeah, thank you. A paper copy, and also if it's possible to have it an e-copy, too, so in case they lose it, or they prefer not to read paper but online, to have that available, and it's also linkable really quickly in a meeting. So I think both would be great to have it available.
Yeah, I would agree.
One last thing, I don't think our code of conduct has a separate section for the chair of the body, so I'd love to put something together for the boards and commissions, so we have, so staff has something to go through with them when a new chair is elected.
So I'm currently revising the Boards and Commissions handbook, and I'm waiting for our final decisions here.
Okay.
So that I can add that information in, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Great. All right. And then the second part of that is, do we want to ask the boards and commissions to establish annual or biannual goals and and report out on the progress?
That's okay. We, but we, I was gonna say, we used to do that many years ago. Right, Mr. City Manager, and then they come in and make a presentation to council once a month. Once a month. They would come in.
That's too much.
Each board and commission. No, 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 like, boards and commission will come in, maybe they can schedule however, and they give a quick update on what they've accomplished.
We do have twenty-three boards.
It can be a memo.
I, if we could include it in the weekly management report, there's, and if you want a report, post that on a certain board or commission, depending on whatever's happening, then that could be requested.
I would love that in the weekly report.
So is that the chairperson that's gonna write the report, or is that a new thing that staff have to do?
So I I would say.
Because you get the minutes. I know that's not a report on goals.
Well, if I could, if we're asking them, and I'm okay with it every two years, basically, after, I guess, their reappointment in July, so their first, what, maybe August or September meeting, they sit down and do a goals session, and I guess that minutes would have to be just a little bit more robust, and that would come to us.
That minutes would include their ten goals or five goals, or, and I don't think it should be more than ten. Please.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there are a number of committees that already do this. They already have goals, and they include them. They include, they include, from what I've seen, they include a rough overview of the goals, but not maybe the whole matrix. So like, I know with like Sustainability and with Cultural Arts, I have a whole matrix of their goals. So the number of goals, a number of committees already do this, so I'm wondering, right now, what I, what I remember is that they give kind of a brief overview in the minutes, but not the whole thing. But the whole thing is available, so maybe as part of the, just the report, that the the material that's already produced, not having to create something new, but what's already produced within the body anyway, just to pass it along to us.
And really, the minutes could include, you know, they don't have to take down everything, but what are their five goals? What are their ten goals for the, for the two, for the next two years? That'd be really helpful. And then we've seen it be successful with with commissions.
Police does that, too. Yeah, Mr. Combs, and usually the liaisons, he sends. Yeah, Mr. Combs, and usually the liaisons, he sends us the information.
Would you like that codified in the handbook? Would you like a section added that council requires the BCCs to establish annual or biannual, biannual goals?
Yes, and Mr. City.
If I could, if I could clarify those goals, too, is that those goals should pertain to council, current council goals, and/or their mission as outlined in the book.
Yes, we don't need a planning, having a bunch of parks goals.
And if I could, just scheduling-wise, it should be after the new, after the, you know, when we do the big appointments in July, or whatever that.
I think it depends on the committee, because like, the IOB's going to have a different schedule than, say, the cultural arts, so.
I'm saying their first meeting after their biannual appointments, you know what I'm saying? Because they're staggered.
Yes, okay.
So whenever it is, I'm not saying it's a specific day or month.
Getting the weeds, but just, I think just asking them for a goal. Goals would be, that'd be good enough. And I, I'm, required is a word I'm not so comfortable with, but just shall. Committee shall provide a report of the goals every year.
Councilor Rosati.
Are you done with this topic?
Oh, no, are, are we good with this? Do we, okay, great, we're all in agreement.
So I was going to add a topic.
Go for it.
Dress code. I've noticed in the last couple of years, our dress code is kind of slipping. I think if you're on camera at this dais, I think we should have a coat and tie dress code. Not, not across the board, but if you're at this dais, and you're on camera, and, and you're presenting yourself to the public, I think you should have, we should have a coat and tie dress code. And for the ladies, will you make that decision?
I personally disagree. I mean, you all, let's hear from everybody.
Is there, maybe identify to business professional or business attire? Because, I mean, some individuals just show up, they're very casual to, to the meetings. And if you're representing the public, I understand what you're saying, because you're on camera. I think business attire is appropriate for people to show up in the meeting, and be respectful that they're on camera and people can see them.
Can I ask, we don't have a dress code in our code of conduct, right? I, I don't know if it's, it's if, I don't know if it behooves us to put specifically coat and tie, but I think in their code of conduct, we should have something about business or professional attire becoming, you know, of a, of a, an appointed member. I, I don't know how to put it in there, but.
I'm sensing some agreement between the three of you. I'll say, the Vice Mayor and I clearly don't agree. I will go with the majority, but I, I will think, I, I'm thinking about the youth board, for example. I'm not requiring kids to come in in coat and tie. It also starts to get into questions of affordability, quite frankly.
I don't want it too strict, but.
And, and.
I think, is it those who have public meetings and on camera? Not, so the youth, I don't think they meet on camera, so it would be like Parks and Recreation.
Planning.
Planning, police.
If, if I could, how about simply, no inappropriate attire? And members should dress respectfully.
It's subjective.
If I could have the city manager weigh in on this, and another point that was made previously, where it was talked about their conduct should be held to a stricter standard, and requiring coats and ties, I'm, if the city manager, sorry, city attorney could weigh in on, sorry, both of you, could weigh, I, on, on making, on, if you could weigh in on making these requirements stricter than what council is observing, I'm, I don't, not sure that's a great precedent, but.
I'll take a look at it and get back to them. I can foresee First Amendment issues.
Yeah, yeah. I think it should just be a suggestion. I, I don't know if we can hold people to it.
Past councils have. I remember David Gordon sitting in that seat, saying, coat and tie.
I, I think just overall professional attire, you know.
I think that phrase, I'm fine with that phrase.
It's like when we go to an event, you always look and see what is business casual, business attire, you know. You're going to wear, you know, a black tie. It's, I think it's not unacceptable that you recommend that they would be dressed in a business attire. And most people understand what that means. If they want to wear a tie, that's up to them, if they.
Members should present, should strive to present themselves in a professional attire.
Professional, or dressed in a business attire, something business, because they're here conducting the city business. You don't want to see somebody who's in torn shirt, shirt, or, you know.
I think this gets into, like, again, the, the spectrum, right? Because I, I was thinking about it from the place of, what if I am serving, and I'm on a commission, it's on camera, but I'm coming from work, and I work with kids, and my, my outfit is a t-shirt and jeans, because that is what I do, right? So am I now going to have to take an extra step to find business attire before I make it here at 6:00 PM from my job that I'm leaving at 5:30 PM? You, you know what I mean? So how far do we want, how stringent do we want to be? And thinking about the fact that they are volunteers, and the fact that we don't even have this conduct, code of conduct for ourselves.
That's why I'm saying shall strive. I think it's just a simple, like, I don't know.
I have an idea to throw out there, maybe, so the city clerk surveyed so many cities here, or looked at them. Can we find out if other cities have language, and if they do, what is the language? I, I think it's simple to see what other cities are doing, instead of reinventing ourself to figure out, and if there, nobody's doing it, or maybe there is some, and we can take the language as a recommendation.
I did capture a combination of what I, what I'm hearing, which could be, members should strive to present themselves professionally, and are encouraged to wear business attire at publicly televised meetings.
I'm fine with that. As long as it's not a requirement, I, I think we get into, into the weeds there.
Can I add one more thing? The.
Oh, no, maybe.
The Burbank Advisory Council on Disabilities used to be an official Board and Commission. A number of years ago, they had trouble with attendance and with quorum, and so they moved to, it's a non-official meeting. They still meet every month. If it's okay, I would love to give direction to the city clerk to give a presentation, pros and cons, to the Burbank Advisory Council on possibly having them rejoin as a official commission, and just.
We don't appoint them.
No, we don't appoint them. What I'm saying is, if they're interested, have a conversation with the city clerk, and that will give them the opportunity.
Within the bounds of this.
Petition. Oh, is that so?
No, you don't, you don't make another entity your entity. They're a different, they have, they're a council, they're separately formed, or they have 501(c)(3).
Right, that's the whole thing, they.
You wouldn't make them your board or commission.
No, 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 I know that.
Like, BHC is not a city commission.
Right, and I'm saying, they, so the, so Burbank Advisory Council used to be a city commission, and they basically dropped the official status, and then continued to hold meetings. And so what I was offering is, if we could direct staff to simply give them a presentation on the pros and cons of applying back to try to see if they're interested in wanting to be a board or commission again. Because for me, a lot of the changes in COVID have allowed quorums to be held.
To what purpose? With what, with what duties, duties and authorities?
I mean, basically what they already do, which is send us advice on, you know, wheelchair ramps and infrastructure of accessibility.
Do a study session with them, twice a year?
I don't know, maybe.
I think this would be a separate agenda item, too.
Oh, okay.
C three, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Yeah, not that, not that it's like, not, as you said, I think it's a separate ask, it's separate from this item, that maybe you can bring up at the end.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm looking at the city attorney here.
Well, this is, I mean, you're consolidating, you're talking about.
But we're not adding anything new, though.
Well, all, all I can say is, so for many boards and commissions, it is, it is not a simple conversation about them no longer being a formal legislative body. Many of them are very frustrated with the requirements of transparency, public records, minutes, quorums, and there is a great tension, because they come, they come to do something that they love, which is not the administration of government and transparency. And everything you create must follow those rules. So we've had violations of the Brown Act, we've had arguably conflicts of interest, and so I wouldn't just.
Well, I'm not advocating for them to join or not. I would just, all I'm asking is, there's a lot of changes that have happened to the Brown Act with COVID, and a lot of it is exemptions for people who have disabilities or are health impaired. Well, there are some, I'm just saying.
Only hardship, very, very limited. They still, they still have to meet.
Right, and I, I would say, a lot of the people who are serving on the commission would fall into that. And so all I'm asking is, if, if we could get a staff member to simply give a presentation to them.
So maybe do that as a, a separate agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say that. And, and my, my two cents off the cuff would be perhaps asking them to inquire with, with the city if they would like that kind of presentation, just so it's coming from them.
Well, so on the topic, the topic was how many boards and commissions Burbank has in comparison to other cities, and how to consolidate ones to eliminate duplication. So is that in line with adding yet another, which has to be staffed, which I would call locally an unfunded mandate? Because once you create them, you have to staff them, it puts a demand on the city clerk's office.
All right, well, before I agendize anything, then I'll talk to some commission members.
I, I feel like it's more appropriate coming from them to us. All right, I think that's everything then. Oh, oh, I had one more thing to add. It was just an ask if we could look into, and when the ordinance comes back, having an annual survey of our boards and commissions, about their experience on the commission. You know, tell us what you like, you don't like, very vague, open to them.
I did add that earlier on.
Oh, thank you.
We could do that, we could do it through, like, Survey Monkey, just once a year. Maybe I can work with Councilmember Mullins to figure out the best time of the year, maybe right bef, right after, maybe six, give him six months after the July.
Before they leave at the end of their term.
The week before.
That, that would be great, just to hear their thoughts, you know, maybe they like some of the changes, maybe they have more questions that we didn't think about up here.
Maybe around December, because I think you need at least six months in the job to get the feel of things, and identify what's working and what's not. Okay.
That would be great. Okay, anything else before we close this out? All right, we don't, we don't need a motion, right? We get a lot of direction.
Yeah, you've given general direction. The city clerk's office will ask us and other staff to help bring the item back for introduction.
Great. So on that note, now we will hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Councilor Anthony.
Thank you. On Saturday, I attended the Burbank Dig Day. We didn't do much digging, we actually raked a bunch of debris out of Cambridge Park. A lot of twigs and leaves and things that came down from the winds, so that was fun. And then I attended the swearing-in ceremony for Assembly Member Nick Schultz, I think we know who that is. And on Sunday, there was the Burbank Music Center grand opening, very cool.
Councilmember Rosati.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the January 29th, 30th, and 31st, I attended the 2025 Southern California Mayors and Councilmembers Academy with Councilmember Mullins. We also attended the Cal Cities LA County Division Dinner. Earlier this week, I met with Assembly Member Schultz and discussed the extension of AB 423, and we talked about the bill that incentivized development. I also met with Senator Menjivar about extending AB 423. And then also, I received a thank you email from one of the fire victims that benefited from the housing program that was set up with Congressman Schiff's office, and she was able to get an apartment here in Burbank, which is pretty cool.
Thank you. Councilor Mullins.
Thank you. As Councilmember Rosati said, we were both at the conference, the annual conference, had a chance to speak with other council members and learned about their practices. I attended with the majority of you, Assembly Member Nick Schultz swearing ceremony. And I also, yesterday, I had a meeting with Ryan and Brian regarding the, the Bell property, and that was it.
Great. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Sure. Let's see, on Thursday morning, I went to the Valley Economic Alliance Board Retreat, where we mainly focused on recovery from the fires and coordinated efforts in the, in the valley. Then on the first, I also attended Assembly Member Nick Schultz's swearing-in ceremony, Glendale Library. And then yesterday morning, I attended the San Fernando Valley COG Transportation Subcommittee, and we mostly focused on double-tracking for the MetroLink.
Great, thank you. On Friday, the 31st, I had the pleasure of filming my first mayor's podcast with my Burbank.com. You can check it out, it's live now. Craig and Ross and I had a hoot of a time, it was fun. And expect many more fun ones in the future, some may or may not be about food around Burbank. On February 1st, I also attended Assembly Member Schultz's swearing-in, along with many of my colleagues. And then on that same day, our Burbank High baseball and alumni teams had a really great fundraiser for the Central Altadena Little League. There were a few news reports about it on our local news networks. They raised over $2,000 for the Little League. They got them sports equipment, pants, mitts, gloves, and the best part is they had them out there that night. So they got to enjoy a night of baseball, and if you look at their, their field is charred. You know, so they really gave them a nice night, some equipment, and, and really covered the needs that I think are, are considered secondary to many people, but if baseball's your life, it's pretty primary. So shout out to them, they're, they're phenomenal, and I, I couldn't be prouder of, of Burbank High's baseball team. I even wore my Burbank blue. That's coming from a boroughs kid. And then on Sunday, February 2nd, I attended the Burbank Music Center grand opening with Councilor Anthony. We had a great time, and we're really excited to see all of the great work that comes out of that. They, they were phenomenal. And if you haven't had a chance, take a tour, it's a really great space. And that is what I did. All righty, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do we have any additional agenda items? Councilmember Anthony.
Could we get a memo to us on any changes to the hillside zoning ordinance from 2022 with, specifically with regards to view protections? Any changes that may have happened? And then second, can I get a first-step report on a cannabis retail ordinance and possible tax measure comparable to cities of Pomona and Long Beach? And be sure to include any sensitive use restrictions.
I recall there was an ad hoc committee task force memo that was supposed to come out.
Yes, did, we gave that report, didn't, that was.
No, no, and your other member, who's no longer here.
Task force, ad hoc.
We gave a report back in, was Plymouth a report back in March, I thought, wasn't it?
I thought it died, because you never came back.
Okay, how about this? I'll give a first-step report, come back to give feedback from the ad hoc committee, and we'll take steps from there. That way, it's on the agenda.
Is it just you?
I guess it's just me now. We have the findings, I thought we presented them, I'm sorry.
I don't think that happened, sorry. He abandoned you. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Just a quick one, we haven't heard about CSOs in a while, that I remember, community service officers. I don't know if it's coming back soon. If it's not coming back soon, can we get a memo? If it is, then I'll just wait till it comes back.
Yeah, we can give you a memo. We're currently in recruiting for them. So we, we give you a status update.
Great. Anything else? No, we're not going to give the city manager a heart attack today? All right, the kitchen is closed. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, February 11th next week for a regular meeting in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you, Burbank, and good night.